Or to hear complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sean. Any discussion of the motion? Lisa, I believe we have to do roll call, don't we, for this one?
Yes, we do. Dr. Harris?
Aye.
Bill Gilbert?
Aye.
Debbie Critchfield?
Kurt Liebig?
Aye.
Josh Miller?
Aye.
I'm Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
I'm Mr. Simmons.
Aye. Okay, so we'll go into executive session and reconvene here at nine o'clock. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Call the meeting to order. Do we need to take a roll call?
No, no, you need to say your thing first.
Okay. The board concluded its discussion and took no actions on the matters discussed in our executive session. We have a pretty full agenda today, given the time we've got allocated for it. Before we begin, I'd like to again thank President Wagner and the team from Idaho State University for hosting us at the University House last night. It was a nice evening. You ordered up perfect weather. But it was nice to see the renovations that have done to that historic building, and I'm sure it's a wonderful asset for the campus in terms of hosting events for alumni and students. And so it was a pleasure to be there. So thanks for that, and thanks for your hospitality. Let's begin the agenda. You know, you'll notice our consent agenda is quite long, and that's by design. We're, as a board, we're trying to put more items on the consent agenda so that we have, we can use this time for more strategic discussions. And I just want to make a statement that all of these items have been vetted in detail in committee. And so we're just trying to use this as a way to better utilize board time. So with that, Mr. Gilbert, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, there's one change on the consent agenda, item five of the bar consent agenda, that you have the updated amendment to the license agreement that's different than what was originally in your packet. But with that, I move to approve the consent agenda.
A second to the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, the motion passes unanimously. I believe we have one individual who signed up for our open forum, so I'd like to invite Dave Smith, if he's here, up to the board table. Yep, perfect. Welcome. They must like you, because usually you allocate two minutes for open forum. And you actually, it says on the agenda three, so you get an extra minute. So, Mr. Smith, the floor is yours, and you just have to push the button there to get the green light, and you should be good to go.
Excellent. I'll take more minutes if it's available. Good morning, board members. My name is Dave Smith. I am the son of a U of I graduate. I am the son-in-law of two lifelong Idaho educators. I'm a three-time graduate of ISU, and I'm the father of a current ISU student. Idaho education is in my blood. Today, I speak on my own behalf regarding the passage of Senate Bill 1198. Senate Bill 1198 has marked a dark and deeply troubling shift in the landscape of public higher education in Idaho. Though this law cannot be undone here today, we must be honest about what it is. A law that censors truth, targets vulnerable students, and strips colleges and universities of the tools needed to create environments where all learners can thrive. This law does not protect education. It undermines it. It does not promote fairness. It erases the realities faced by many of our students. It is without question a political attack dressed up as a policy, and it is the students, not the politicians, who will pay the price, because the politicians object to students learning about the realities of race, gender, disability, or identity. DEI is not about political ideology. It's about student success. It's about preparing Idaho's future leaders for the real world. If we care about outcomes, about fairness, and about freedom of thought, we cannot afford to let politics gut the core values of higher education. This policy is a politically motivated attempt to micromanage Idaho's colleges and universities, strip away support from our most vulnerable students, and silence educators who dare to speak uncomfortable truths. What worries me most is what this signals to our students and to the broader world, that Idaho doesn't trust its own educators or believe in the value of diverse perspectives. Educators should be trusted to teach, and students should be trusted to think critically. To this board, I realize your legal obligations, but you also have a moral one. You're not powerless. You have the authority and the duty to lead with integrity, to protect academic freedom, and to boldly advocate for students who are now more isolated and less supported than ever. You can choose how strictly and how fearfully this law is interpreted. You can fight for nuanced guidance. You can support faculty who walk a legal tightrope just to stay true to their educational mission. And you can ensure that student success for all students remains a priority, even if the legislature refuses to see their full humanity. You have the platform. You have the responsibility, and now you have the urgency. Stand up for education in Idaho. Stand up for your faculty. Stand up for your students. Don't let this law define who we are and what we stand for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Appreciate your comments. We are going to now move to the bar agenda. I will pass the baton to Mr. Gilbert.
Yeah, first item on the agenda today are the FY 2026 Agency and Institution Operating Budgets. Everybody has had the opportunity to look at those budgets. The approval of these annual operating budgets allowed board-related agencies and institutions to continue operations, obviously adjust for employee compensation, health benefits, statewide cost allocation, et cetera. We have representatives from all agencies and the institutions that are available to answer any specific questions. We've gone through these in detail in bar. Patrick would normally be up at the table with us, but unfortunately, he's under the weather. So, but I'm, you know, between myself, Scott, and others, we can answer any questions, but, and certainly can ask any of the institutions to come forward. I would ask if there are any questions related to the operating budgets or any comments from particularly any of the bar members, from David, Linda, or Kurt. And if there are not, I will go to motion.
Please.
Okay. Excuse me. I move to approve the FY 2026 operating budgets for the Office of the State Board of Education, Idaho Public Television, Division of Vocational Rehabilitation, Public Charter Schools Commission, Colleges and Universities, Career Technical Education, Agriculture, Research, and Extension Service, Health Education Programs, and Special Programs as presented in attachments two through 28.
Is there a second? Okay, thank you, Dave. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Mr. Gilbert?
Yes. The next item on the agenda is item three.
Can I make a, just make a comment on item two?
Yes, please.
Okay. Our second item related, that was on the agenda, was related to agency head compensation and CEO contract terms related primarily to our universities. We just were in executive session on this issue, and I personally need time to have one-on-one conversations with each of our presidents before we publicly make a motion on this. So our plan here is to defer this action item. We'll pick it, we're going to schedule a special board meeting next week to address this, but I wanted to have the opportunity to talk to each of our leaders prior to...
Yeah, that was different. So to that end, actually, I will make it a motion to amend the agenda, to remove item two from the agenda today.
Second to the motion.
Okay, so we have a formal motion to amend by Mr. Gilbert, seconded by Dr. Clark. Any discussion of that motion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, thank you. Mr. Gilbert?
Item number three on the agenda today is Idaho State University. It's a reimbursement for the resolution for the Life Sciences Building. Idaho State University is requesting the board approve a reimbursement resolution related to the Life Science project. This would allow ISU to reimburse itself from future bond proceeds for construction and other qualified project expenses incurred before the bonds are issued. Planning and design is currently underway, using $14 million from the permanent building fund, with a full financing plan to be presented once the project scoping is complete. I believe we have Jennifer Steele and Brian Segendorf here. I would ask them to come forward and for any questions. Bar has reviewed this in detail. Brian, Jan, just if you have any comments related to this.
Thank you, Chair Gilbert, and board members. This is standard protocol for this type of project when bond financing is anticipated to be part of the financing plan. We anticipate going out to bond next year and are waiting for final cost estimates and putting together our financing plan, which will be a combination of the PIPFAC funding, philanthropy, and bond financing.
Are there questions for either Jan or Brian, from anybody on the board? If not, Mr. President, I'll go to motion.
Please.
I move to approve the request by Idaho State University for authority to use future bond proceeds to reimburse construction expenditures for the Life Sciences Building and further approve the resolution of the Idaho State Board of Education regarding the same as set forth in attachment one to the materials submitted to the board. This does require a roll call vote.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion, a second by Dr. Clark. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Oh, I can't do that. I have to do roll call. Sorry, Lisa.
Sean Keough?
Aye.
Kelly Roach?
Aye.
Cindy Sidaway?
Aye.
David Turnbull?
Aye.
Linda Clark?
Aye.
Bill Gilbert?
Aye.
Debbie Critchfield?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
Kurt Liebig?
Just waiting for the leak given announcement.
Thank you.
Mr. Gilbert?
All right, I will move to the fourth item, which is from the University of Idaho Authorization for Additional Interim Financing Note. The U of I requests the board approval to issue a Series 2025 interim note of up to $25 million to continue progress on its student housing modernization project, including renovations to Wallace Residence Center, Theopolis Tower, and the development of 400 new graduate and housing units. This short-term financing will provide bridge funding until the long-term bonds are issued in 2025. Note will mature by January 1, 2026, and carry an interest rate not to exceed 6% and be secured by U of I's general rev pledge. U of I remains well within their debt policy limits, and financing, and the financing approach offers them flexibility and cost efficiency. So I believe we have Kim and Brian here. I'd like to ask you to come forward and answer, maybe give a quick comment and answer any questions. And Seth, too. Hi, Seth. You're the AV guy today. Sweet. All right. Brian, Kim?
There we go. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
All right. Good morning, President Liebig, Chair Gilbert, members of the board. I'm Brian Foysey, Vice President for Finance at the University of Idaho. Joining me today are Heather Casperson, I believe she's joining by Zoom. She represents PFM, our financial advisor on this project. Kim Salisbury, our Senior Associate Vice President for Finance and Planning. And of course, Seth will run the PowerPoint for us. Regent Gilbert, do you want me to move through our presentation quickly or simply be available for questions?
I think it actually would be in this case, because this is a bit different. Move through it quickly.
Okay, all right. I'll do that. I'll say quickly, University of Idaho actually has two agenda items related to the financing of our housing project, as Chair Gilbert mentioned. Expansion of our interim financing and plans for permanent financing, because these two separate agenda items are technically part of the same project. I'll address them together in this single presentation, even though Chair Gilbert will ask the board to consider two separate motions. So Seth, yeah, thank you. If we move to the slide. Our request today is for permanent financing authorization as well as increased financing authorization for our previously approved housing renewal and replacement project. This includes the redevelopment of South Hill, which some board members toured in April, as well as phased renovations to Theopolis Tower and Wallace Residence Center. The project also includes all infrastructure and utility improvements necessary to deliver the project. I'll provide just a very brief refresher here. We're doing the work through a fixed-price agreement with the master developer, Gilbane. This establishes a not-to-exceed total project budget of $135 million, and importantly, transfers both budget and schedule risk to the master developer, and it enables him to manage contracts and subcontracts to deliver the project. Today's request is for approval to issue a series of tax-exempt general revenue bonds not to exceed $150 million. In addition, we're requesting to increase interim financing authority by $25 million to a total of $67.5 million, which provides the project with flexibility in the event of delay due to market volatility. As you can see here on the slide, the project involves demolition of 161 out of 431 beds in the South Hill neighborhood. We're constructing 232 beds of single-student housing, new construction of 180 family housing beds, renovation of 986 beds in the Wallace Residence Center, and finally, renovation of 406 beds in Theopolis Tower. We're able to do this using only one-third of the old footprint of the South Hill complex. The units that are located on the other two-thirds of the footprint will remain in service and allow us to collect rents during the construction period. And while it has taken me 10 years to be able to come to the board to be able to say this, I do want to point out that we have a project, a capital project, that is actually coming to you with a decreased total project budget. It has decreased by about $9 million since our presentation in November of 2024. You can see, if you look at the categories there, some individual categories have increased or decreased, but overall, a significant decrease in project cost. In addition to that, we are actually ahead of schedule. So we're very thrilled with the progress on this particular project. We went through a significant value engineering effort that allowed us to identify project elements that could be either revised, reduced, or removed from the project without impacting the student experience. So we'll move to the next slide, and I'll ask Heather Casperson from PFM. Again, they are our financial advisor on this project to discuss in more detail the plan of finance and the indicative financing terms. Just so the board will be aware, PFM is one of the largest municipal financial advisors in the nation. They're very familiar with the kind of effort required to get a municipal financing of this nature across the finish line. So we want to give you an opportunity to hear directly from her, as they're clearly the subject matter experts in this regard.
Well, thank you, Brian, and thank you for allowing me to present this to you. Due to the extensive scope of the project, as Brian was mentioning, it always was anticipated that completing the necessary agreements and approvals and securing the funding would take significant time. The initial funding approval was received in August of 2024. Interim financing note was completed in December of 2024. These short-term financing solutions were necessary to provide the liquidity to maintain the construction schedule without encumbering additional university reserves. As noted on the third bullet on this slide, the university and its advisors have outlined dual paths forward to provide flexibility for the next steps. They argue items four and five on the agenda today. And as Brian mentioned, they, while presented together, will need separate approvals. One path simply has the university to issue the permanent financing using its general revenue bonds. Proceeds of these bonds would replenish the university's reserves and complete the project financing. However, due to potential volatility in the capital markets and other credit considerations, another alternative is for the university to delay its permanent financing and issue an additional $25 million of interim financing. The university, along with its advisory team, will continue to evaluate which path forward would be in the interest of the overall project. In February of last year, Moody's had placed the university's general revenue credit as rating under review, also called RUR, for potential downgrade citing the proposed acquisition of the University of Phoenix. The RUR would have negatively impacted borrowing rates for this project. However, since the termination of the agreement with the University of Phoenix was approved at a special board meeting earlier this month, Moody's has now confirmed the general revenue credit of the university as A1 with a stable outlook. Another consideration for this project has been the volatility we have seen in the capital markets this year. Due to the policies of our current administration in Washington, particularly those related to tariffs, immigration, and taxation, the municipal market has at times reacted with uncertainty and volatility in rates. If we could go to the next slide, please? This next slide outlines and describes the permanent financing. The university and its advisors have developed a detailed pro forma for this project, which includes the university's existing housing auxiliary and takes into consideration units that will be taken offline either permanently or temporarily during this development period. The net cash flow from the housing auxiliary is sufficient to service both the projected new debt as well as the existing systems debt. The pro forma included at the bottom of this slide includes an estimate of the permanent general revenue bond financing. And I would like to note that the housing auxiliary is projected to maintain positive debt service coverage or coverage all over one times. It is expected that all of the assets will be fully developed or renovated by fiscal year '28, where the debt service coverage you'll see on the table below is projected to be 1.09x. As was mentioned in the prior slide, the plan of finance is subject to volatility in the capital markets until the university is able to price the bonds with lenders. We have included in the pro forma 25 basis points of cushion above current market rates. Noted in the last bullet on the right side, interest rates can increase approximately 80 basis points, and the pro forma will still achieve 1.0x debt service coverage in the fiscal '28 when it comes online. I'd like to move to the last slide on the financing. Thank you. This slide provides indicative financing terms for the project. As outlined in the box on the left-hand side, the permanent financing will be tax-exempt. It will be structured with level debt service amortization. It will include a 10-year par call, and the principal will be amortized over 30 years from that stabilized year of fiscal '28. Capitalized interest will be included for the first two years as the project is constructed, and the indicative all-in interest cost of the project is projected to be 4.78%, which reflects rates from April. However, since that time, we've seen taxes and interest rates fluctuate. We've seen that the yield curve has steepened, which means short-term interest rates have gone down, and long-term interest rates have gone up about 25 basis points. And as I mentioned on the prior slide, the current pro forma does include additional cushion related to interest rates. And we will continue to actively monitor the capital markets as we proceed. Brian, I'll turn it back to you.
Thanks, Heather. Yeah, thank you, Seth. This is our final slide here. Just to wrap up, the sole source of funds for this project will be university debt, issued through general revenue bonds, subject, of course, to approval of this board. All debt service payments to be made from housing and other auxiliary services revenues, although importantly, general revenue bonds of the university are secured through a general revenue pledge of the university. This allows us maximum flexibility to tap any different revenue sources, well, many, I'll say, different revenue sources if needed over the anticipated 30-plus-year life of the debt. Even with this new debt on the balance sheet, the university would remain well below the state board debt ceiling of 8%, coming in at 4.2%. As Heather mentioned, the plan is to move forward with permanent financing either in Q3 or Q4 of this year. We want to keep our eye on the macroeconomic volatility and importantly, want to buffer against significant cost implications if construction were to pause, so we are requesting the additional interim financing authority. This gives us maximum flexibility to issue bonds and ensure we have board approval to proceed in the most cost-effective manner in the event of market volatility. You can see as well on the slide various important construction completion dates, various opening dates for South Hill, Theopolis, and Wallace, based on phased renovations. We'll let you know that our first phase of renovation in Theopolis is underway now, scheduled to open this fall. And as Heather mentioned, the full set of projects wrapping up by fall of 2027, which is fiscal '28. And with those explanations, Chair Gilbert, that concludes our presentation. We're happy to address questions.
Are there questions? I want to say at the outset. So hopefully, all the board understands what we're creating here is basically flexibility for them to react to the capital markets. And I think importantly also, potentially, if needed, I think this is low probability, but an off-ramp as well in the process. So are there questions?
Yes.
David?
Well, Brian, it's a good thing I listen to my podcasts on 1.5 speed so I could keep up with you. You did a good job of moving through it quickly.
We noticed the long agenda. Wanted to be sensitive to that.
What's your percentage of completion right now?
I would say that we are probably about 25% of the way through the project. Ray Pankoff, our Director of Architectural and Engineering Services, is in the back. Am I close, Ray?
Yes.
Okay, all right, about 25%, sir.
And how do you think you're tracking on contingency?
Kim, do you want to address that question, or should we have Ray come up?
Yeah, okay, all right.
Lisa says we're doing very well.
And I noticed that there's 80 basis points of spread to play with here to keep your DCSR at 1.0.
Correct.
Now, do I understand that since those April projections, you've eaten up 25 basis points?
That's correct. As of our date today, we're 25 basis points above, but we do still have...
That as of today, because rates are down about 15 basis points from this week.
Yeah, well, so Heather, can I ask you to respond to that question with respect to rates today?
It's probably not that important.
For about 15, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I think, you know, you are correct. We have not been monitoring on a daily basis, and we are waiting for the projection of the Federal Reserve, which is coming out, which I think we are not expecting any change at that time. So we still have significant contingency available.
No, it's just more questions of curiosity, tracking the project. I think, you know, we're ready to approve here. I'm ready to approve it, so I don't have any further questions.
Great. Kurt?
Brian, could you just speak to the, I mean, all these financial models are based on certain assumptions: vacancy rates, lease rates, interest rates. Could you just speak to sort of level of conservatism, your view of the level of conservatism in some of these key underlying assumptions?
I certainly can, President Liebig. I would say probably the most important thing to consider is that as we began this project, we started with a market and demand study conducted by RJA. This is the primary work that firm does. They actually did considerable work and then refreshed that study as we got ready to begin construction. They, between surveying students, faculty, staff, property managers, property owners in the community, really anyone who might have a say in demand or rates, we had almost 60,000 data points collected during this survey. And what we know is that the project that we presented for your consideration today only accounts for about 50% of the identified demand for these various kinds of housing units. So we feel like we've been exceedingly conservative in terms of the amount of construction. And as far as the rates are concerned as well, too, we still compare very favorably to peers in the state, and we feel that rates and demand are pretty, are set pretty conservatively.
Are there any other questions before I go to motion? If not, I'm going to go to first motion and then the second consecutively. But at the beginning here, you will need roll call votes. Kurt, for both of these.
Okay.
Excuse me. I move to approve a supplemental resolution for issuance of the Series 2025 note, the title of which is as follows. A supplemental resolution of the Regents of the University of Idaho authoring the issuance of its Series 2025 note, delegating authority to approve the terms and provisions of the Series 2025 note and the principal amount up to $25 million, authorizing the execution and delivery of a note purchase contract and Series 2025 note, and providing for other matters relating to the authorization, issuance, sale, and payment of the Series 2025 note.
The second to the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Do we want to take these one at a time? Is that...
Yes, one at a time.
Okay.
Go ahead and call them.
Okay. Any comments or questions on the motion? Hearing none, Lisa, can you do a roll call, please?
Kelly Roach?
Aye.
Cindy Sidaway?
Aye.
David Turnbull?
Aye.
Linda Clark?
Aye.
Bill Gilbert?
Aye.
David, Debbie Critchfield?
Aye.
Kurt Liebig?
Aye.
Sean Keough?
Aye.
Mr. Gilbert?
I move to approve a supplemental resolution for the 2025 bonds, the title of which is as follows. A supplemental resolution of the Regents of the University of Idaho authorizing the issuance and providing for the sale of general revenue bonds, Series 2025, delegating authority to approve the terms and provisions of the 2025 bonds and the principal amount of the 2025 bonds, up to $150 million, authorizing the execution and delivery of a bond purchase agreement upon sale of the Series 2025, and providing for other matters relating to the authorization, issuance, sale, and payment of the 2025 bonds.
Second, we have a motion from Mr. Gilbert, seconded by Mr. Turnbull. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, Lisa, can we do a roll call, please?
Cindy Sidaway?
Aye.
David Turnbull?
Aye.
Linda Clark?
Aye.
Bill Gilbert?
Aye.
Debbie Critchfield?
Aye.
Kurt Liebig?
Aye.
Sean Keough?
Aye.
Kelly Roach?
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Gilbert?
Okay, the next item on the agenda, we've already got Brian and Kim, but particularly Kim at the table, is the Long Range Campus Development Plan. U of I is requesting board approval for its Long Range Campus Development Plan for the Moscow campus. It's a 25-year framework that they will give us a bit of an overview on, was gathered broad stakeholder input to guide future campus preservation growth and strategic investment. So with that, I will turn it to Kim.
All right, thank you. President Liebig, members of the board, thank you for letting us join today for the record. My name is Kim Salisbury, Senior Associate Vice President of Finance and Planning. With me today have Brian Foysey, VP of Finance and Administration, Ray Pankoff, Director of Architectural and Engineering Services, and Seth View, who is kindly sitting up here to take me through the slides. Before I get into the slides more, there were some questions at the bar meeting about the overall assumptions of growth at U of I and the state writ large for our space study, which was part of this Long Range Campus Development Plan. We used potential projections at U of I of increases or decreases of 10% in the employee, in the student population and 5% in the employee population. For the state, we took into account rapid population growth, high in migration rates across the... across the state, and the youthful demographic. Idaho is the second fastest-growing state in the U.S. over the past decade, only behind Utah. This creates modest growth potential in Moscow and the ability to attract industry partners to Legacy Crossing. There has been a net gain in the state's population even in rural areas, including La Ta and adjacent counties. Idaho ranks among the top states for the percentage of population under 18, currently at 26%. This again is second only to Utah. We feel comfortable that these factors together suggest strong growth potential for college-age students. Compared to other states, especially in the Northeast and Midwest, Idaho is well-positioned to have options in how it wants to determine growth going forward. Next slide. We began this 16-month project at the beginning of 2024. Our intention was to create a 25-year flexible plan that will guide preservation and growth on our Moscow campus. We refer to the plan as Vision 2050. We engaged with a design consulting firm, Smith Group, for this effort due to their similar work, which was ongoing here at Idaho State University. After the kickoff, our campus was so excited by the plan that they requested and funded additional studies into athletic facilities, medical education, and a recreation, well-being, and health services study. Next slide. The concurrent studies and the broader plan were developed simultaneously to the U of I's strategic plan and are meant to support the emerging strategic initiatives. We did not stop all activities to focus just on planning. This has been a busy time in which we achieved R1 status and continued construction activities across campus. Our current capital project portfolio is around $360 million. I'm thankful to the Smith Group and to our Architectural and Engineering Services team who took on these activities and led this effort. The photos on this slide, you might have to, oh, can you go back to that last one? Normally, there are photos on this slide. They're of the many campus community outreaches that we hosted to gain feedback of the plan. We conducted a Map My Campus survey, which received over 1,400 responses from students, alumni, employees, and community members. We also met individually and in group settings with user groups across campus and the community through pop-ups, focus groups, and town halls. This slide is our current campus today. As we go to the next slide, you'll see two additional colors added to the map. Dark gold for potential new building sites and a light yellow indicating areas of major renovation. As compared to campus today, Vision 2050 shows potential for growth, especially in the Legacy Crossing area between campus and downtown Moscow. This growth is supported not only by our campus, but also by the city, the local business community, the county, and the state. On the next slide, we're going to highlight 14 priority projects within the plan. The Joint Military Science and Veterans Assistance Center at the former Targhee Hall site is a renovation and expansion project, which received funding from the PBF starting in July of this year. The Applied Engineering and Science Facility will be on our major capital request list for FY '27 funding. Some of the projects will be split into parts and included on our alterations and repair requests, such as the Sixth Street pedestrian mall conversion and the parking lot improvements. Other projects on the list will not be requesting state funding because they have other funding sources. These include athletic renovations and expansions, the Student Recreation Center expansion, the Legacy Crossing mixed-use building, and the Children's Center. From here, we're going to look at some renderings. This is a view of Sixth Street standing next to the College of Natural Resources, looking north. Sixth Street was identified by stakeholders as an area that needs to have less vehicle traffic. There are currently 1,200 students that live in the dorms on the north side of Sixth and frequently walk across the busy street. Our vision is that traffic be rerouted one block to the north, to the far side of Theophilus Tower in this photo. Next. This slide is one block to the west, standing in the intersection of Sixth and Rayburn, looking south. All of this would be pedestrian, with a roundabout drop-off location in front of Wallace Complex and a turnaround on Rayburn at the top of the street in this view. As we expand, we are consciously preserving natural aspects of campus that are identified by stakeholders and incorporating native and low-maintenance landscaping. From here, we're going to look at the Legacy Crossing neighborhood. This was an area of high interest, especially to our community stakeholders, and we have developed near- and long-term development opportunities. I want to point out that we do not own all of the land identified on these maps, so the long-term development could only fully be achieved if additional land becomes available. Hello Walk was designed by the Olmsted Brothers when they visited campus around 100 years ago. As many of you know, the Olmsted Brothers are famous for having designed New York City's Central Park. In the near term, we can widen sidewalks and install signage along the proposed path to connect from the admin lawn to downtown. We received funding from the PBF for the pedestrian bridge that crosses Paradise Creek, so we are starting this near-term plan next month in July. We are also looking, actually, can you go back? Sorry about that. We're also looking at expansion of our medical education facilities, creating a corridor of health from our Huckabee Building and growing towards Gritman Medical Center. As we expand the medical education footprint and remove part of the current parking lots, we are looking at temporary surface parking in the near term, which could be replaced by a parking structure and mixed-use housing areas in the future. Okay, go ahead. This slide is a view from above the current Highway 95-Suite Avenue intersection, looking back into Legacy Crossing. On the slide, you can see the Huckabee Expansion, the Paradise Creek Restoration and Activation, the pedestrian crossings, and the multi-use buildings. In the next slide, we're going to be close to the HR Building, looking back at the previous slide. This view shows the new pedestrian bridge across Paradise Creek and shows potential opportunities for housing, retail, and parking along the creek. It gives a good idea of why the campus and community are excited about this area. We want to create community spaces to enhance our residential campus and contribute to the student experience while still providing accessibility to campus with pathways and ample parking. Our final view is of the northwest corner of campus on Guywix Field. In the near term, the far west section has been identified as a preferred site for the expansion of our Children's Center. Additional near-term development includes construction of sports fields, expansion of the Student Rec Center, and increased parking. In the long term, there is an enclosed recreation facility and a new parking structure closer to the Rec Center. Overall, our campus plan is designed to support our strategic plans for the next 25 years. We will prioritize our investment in the built environment to optimize our resources and enhance decision-making. We encourage and welcome your feedback before adoption of this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Are there questions? Go ahead.
How involved is the city of Moscow in this plan? There's so many universities, I can think of like Wake Forest and Winston-Salem, where the universities become critical and sort of revitalizing the town. That, you know, Wake Forest is one example. Familiar with Colby College, what they did for the city of Waterville, where they've really, the university has been the one that basically replaced what was an industrial base. So I'm just wondering, you know, how involved the city itself was in sort of formulating these plans?
The city has been very involved, as well as the state with their ITD project for Highway 95 and Highway 8 going through. We met probably three or four times with the city leaders to talk to them about this expansion. They're currently looking at upgrading the corner of Sixth and Jackson, where the end of Hello Walk would be downtown. They really like the idea of connecting Hello Walk to downtown and creating that community corridor and space. They're one of the entities that was most excited about the Legacy Crossing changes.
Other questions or comments?
Just a comment. Kim, thank you for the presentation. I remember when we went to the campus first time for the board meeting, it's the first time I'd been on campus, and Bill gave me a preview of what a beautiful setting it is, and it is. If universities were just factories for churning out degrees, you probably wouldn't need this level of planning in detail, but what you've created here is really something that kind of lives in the hearts of the students, creates a place for them, where it's more than just, you know, kind of binds you to your university. So I commend you for what you've done with the creek, for the pedestrian aspects of it. I think it's really well thought out.
Thank you.
And then each building's going to have to come in and stand on its own merits as time progresses, but without a vision and a master plan, you don't have a place to start. So well done.
Thank you very much.
If there are no other questions or comments, I will move to motion.
Please.
Okay. I move to approve the request by the University of Idaho to approve its Long Range Campus Development Plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Turnbull. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Bill?
Item number seven, thank you guys. Item number seven is from the University of Idaho. It's Resolution of Litigation IP Address Space. We discussed this obviously yesterday in executive session, so I do believe, do we have Kent Nelson online?
Chair Gilbert, I am.
So this proposed resolution will allow University of Idaho to resolve pending litigation with IP v. 4. So Kent, you want to give us the quick overview and we'll ask any questions?
So, Chair Gilbert, I'm a bit confused. Item number seven on my agenda is the proposal for dissolution of 4-3 Education, Inc.
Not on mine, so this can't go around. I'm sorry, I have, what, this is why I don't have Patrick, so I will go back. Okay, we can, we'll come, we'll come back to this one. So this is item number eight. So item number seven is the, on our amended agenda here, is the dissolution of 4-3 Education. Yeah, so see what I've got?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Keeping you on your toes.
Yeah, exactly. All right, so Kent, we'll move to item number seven, your item, the actual item number seven, which is the dissolution of 4-3 Education, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. President Leibig, Chair Gilbert, and Regents, for the record, my name is Kent Nelson. I serve as Special Counsel to the University of Idaho and also as President of 4-3 Education, Inc. I am requesting that the Board of Regents, acting as the sole member of 4-3 Education, Inc., now approve the dissolution of the corporation. It was formed solely to act as the purchaser of the assets of the University of Phoenix under the asset purchase agreement approved in 2023, and as you're all aware, that asset purchase agreement has been terminated without closing. 4-3 Education designated the University of Idaho to receive the termination payment, and this was paid by the sellers and received by the university earlier this week. We're done with the transaction. Consequently, there's no further need for the corporation to exist. It has no assets and no creditors, since all transaction expenses ran through the University of Idaho. Our Board of Directors has approved liquidation of the corporation, the plan for liquidation, and we're now asking the Board of Regents to approve the resolutions submitted in Attachment One to the board materials. This resolution evidences approval of the sole member for the liquidation and the corresponding plan. Now, I discovered yesterday that the initial agenda materials, and this is probably my fault, omitted the one page of the dissolution of the, from the proposed resolution.
And Kent, we have that in front of us now.
Perfect, thank you very much. The plan's very simple, there's no assets, no creditors, we'll withdraw from registrations in the foreign states, the other states lower 48, and file articles of dissolution with the Secretary of State. And Lisa Hendricks has the printed version for signature by the President and the Regents, so, I strike that, for signature by the President of the Regents and attestation by the Secretary. With that, I'm ready to stand for one other question, at the end of which I would ask you indulgent for one final point.
Are there any questions? Go ahead and make that final point, and I'll move to resolution.
So this is very likely the last time I'll address this board. I just want to say, it's been an honor and a privilege to be involved in various roles I've filled over the last 25 years, and I hold you and your predecessors in the highest esteem. You did an incredibly important, impactful job as volunteers, and I think you embody the ultimate example of public service in this state. So thank you, and with that, I will shut up.
Thank you, Kent. Well, look, I've not been on this board for 25 years, but I've been dealing with Kent in one capacity another for 25-plus years, and so it's been an absolute pleasure through some pretty interesting and difficult things over time, whether that was University Place or other things, Kent, so I hold you in the same kind of respect. So thank you for all you have done for the university and the state. With that, if there were no comments...
And I hope he does a better job of retiring this time.
Yeah, exactly. He kind of sucks at it. Yep. I will move to resolution. I move to approve the resolution proposed by the President of 4-3 Education, Inc., the title of which is as follows. A Resolution of the Regents of the University of Idaho, acting as the sole member of 4-3 Education, Inc., approving dissolution.
Just second to the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Bill?
Okay. Now, I will move to number eight, which was number seven on my executive agenda, and that is the resolution of litigation. And I will ask if, I think we have Kim on the line or others, do we have, if there's any explanation coming out of the conversation yesterday in executive session or any motion that needs to be prepared?
So, my name is Kim Ritter. I'm the General Counsel for the University of Idaho. We provided a, some material with a proposed motion. I'm not sure if that's provided to you.
It was...
I sent that a few minutes ago to Seth.
Yeah, Seth, if you've got it, I could use it. Where's Seth?
Do you want to come back to this?
This is all I've got, man, so, if you want to go...
Well, we just need a motion to be able to act on it.
Exactly.
So, can...
Here comes Seth.
Oh, hey Seth. Here to save the day again.
Okay, I will go to motion. I move the Board to approve the proposed settlement agreement pursuant to the deliberations of the Board in executive session and to authorize the President of the University of Idaho, or the President's designee, to execute the final agreement in substantial conformance with the agreements presented to the Board, along with such other documents necessary to carry out the terms of the agreement.
We have a motion, is there a second? Thank you, Sean. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
And that concludes the bar agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Since we've been going straight since 8:00 without any break, I'm going to propose a 10-minute break, and so let's adjourn till, let's adjourn till 10:00. We'll begin at 10:10. Thank you. All right, let's call the meeting back into session. Superintendent Critchfield, are you on the line?
I am.
Thank you.
Right here.
Board Member Keough, I will turn the agenda over to you.
Thank you, Chairman Leibig, for the Planning, Policy, and Governmental Affairs Committee. Our first item on the agenda is a proposed amendment to Board Policy 1M Annual Planning and Reporting. It's a second reading, committee members, or board members may remember, and I would turn the time over to Mr. Reiber to walk us through where we are with that.
Thank you, Board Members, Matthew Reiber, for the record, External Affairs and Strategy at the Board. So to just kind of run back through this really quick, on pages, on tab one of your PPGA materials, you're going to see the proposed policy amendments. This is the second reading of these, and this is really just helping the Board not have a rigid timeline set out for strategic planning in, set in our policy, and I will emphasize this is a timely addition and change to this, as DFM has changed their guidance and timeline for strategic plans again this year. So you were going to see strategic plans on this board meeting agenda, but we have a little bit of extra time, so you'll now see them on the August board meeting agenda. So I think just emphasize the idea that having... So I think just emphasize the idea that having, you know, a bit more flexibility in the timeline in our policy allows us to help conform with the DFM deadlines who require these strategic plans. So would certainly stand for any questions that Board members have.
Do Board members have any questions on the policy changes that we can?
Can you just remind the Board of the sort of three system-wide measures that were, you're working with our institutions to have, and then our strategy for the others?
Yes, President Leibig. So within the strategic plans that you'll see come in front of the Board here, I've been working with President Leibig and Chair Keo as well, very intimately, on figuring out these, the next steps for these strategic plans. And what we've really landed on is having these three core measures for all of our institutions, in particular, one around enrollment and student, student enrollment, one around retention, and one around student graduation. So really trying to get three baseline rates that we can compare apples to apples across all our institutions to measure student success and student retention at our institutions, to give all of the Board members a very, you know, basic look of, are we, are we getting students in, are we retaining students, and are we graduating students? And then along with that, a fourth financial accountability metric of some sort. We've left that more open to the institutions, as we've found there's a lot of difference, but especially between our two years and four years on financial affordability, but just helping our institutions focus specifically on those things.
Thank you. Any further questions, Board members? If not, I move to approve the second reading of the proposed amendment to Board Policy 1M as presented in Attachment Two.
Thank you. We have a motion.
Second.
Second by Callie. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. Sean?
Thank you, Chairman Leibig. The next item on the PPGA agenda is the Medical Education Plan Working Group Appointments, and I would turn the time over to Mr. Reiber to talk about that process, and I don't know if our Director, Jan White, wants to add to that at all either, but Matthew?
Perfect. Thank you, Board members. So second item here on undergraduate medical education, and yes, I was going to say the same thing, if Director White has any comments to add that I missed at the end of this. So just a little bit of context stepping back. So there was a larger, larger discussion this previous legislative session, 2025 session, on medical health education in Idaho, both graduate and undergraduate. And with that, the legislature passed House Bill 368, and this created a undergraduate medical education committee to really help start scoping out the future of medical health education in Idaho and in Idaho's post-secondary education system. So with, the legislation kind of sets out certain parameters for them to look at, and they're considering all options in front of them, because I think there's, there's a lot of room to grow for Idaho in our medical education world. So with that, the legislation establishes this committee. On this committee, the State Board of Education has four appointments, and you'll see on tab two, the four appointments suggested. We've been working with Chair Keo, as well as Director White, and a handful of others on working with our legislative partners to figure out the best people for it. Chair Keo from the State Board of Education, Brian Whitlock from the Idaho Hospital Association, Susie Keller from the Idaho Medical Association, and Dr. Ted Epperaly, who runs the Graduate Medical Health Education Program here in Idaho. So we think this is a really strong group that brings a very wide array of expertise to the Undergraduate Medical Health Education Committee and can really help, you know, steer the conversation in a positive direction as we work through it. But I would, any other comments of things that I missed as we navigate this conversation?
No, we're just very grateful to get this started and look forward to the support of the Board as we move through this process with our legislative chairs on that committee.
Thank you. Any questions from anybody?
Sean, I had one. Jen, could you just comment on, the vision is that there's a separate committee that's sort of aligned with this.
I was just going to add that, yeah. In forming the legislative committee, or in kind of support of those efforts, we are working internally to OSBE to pull stakeholder input from across our medical community, from across our institutions as well, to discuss and to collect data relevant to the analysis that the legislative committee will be engaged in, to help fortify that process for them, and will be assisting in facilitating presentations by our institutions of higher education and other stakeholders, and both practitioners and hospital networks. So we know that this is really important to the future of the state, and I know that we have a lot of interest as a Board and within OSBE in helping to support the state in the efforts to resolve this critical need.
Thanks. Thank you, Chairman Leibig. Turnover to our committees. Member, sit away.
Okay, we'll move to motion. Okay, I move to approve. Oh. Okay. I move to approve the appointment of Sean Keo, Brian Whitlock, Susie Keller, and Ted Epperaly to the Medical Education Plan Working Group pursuant to Section 33-3732 Idaho Code.
Second.
Thank, was that Sean? Who seconded? Sean? Oh, Callie. Okay, we have a motion by Cindy, seconded by Callie. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Sean?
Thank you, Chairman Leibig. And the next item on the agenda is update on the Boise State University President search, and I would turn it over to Mr. Reiber and Chairman, our search committee chairman, Board Member Turnbull.
Thank you, Sean. First of all, I'd like to start by thanking President Shin and his leadership group for stepping up to the plate and filling that vital role during this time where we're searching for a new president. Jeremiah and his team have just been rock stars, and as we were discussing in our meeting yesterday, Board Member Gilbert says, you're not the interim president, you are the president, you're acting like the president, we consider you the president, and you're doing a great job. So the search process is going well. I think we've been very well informed by the strength of the search committee, and particularly Lisa Postaff and Jeremiah, who are embedded in the university, have been really valuable to me in giving us insight into the temperature of the university and the things that are really important to the university looking for this new leader. So I'm going to turn it over to Matt here for a minute to describe the process we've been through and where we are in current situation.
Perfect. Thank you, Board Member Turnbull. So up until this point, the search committee just concluded its work with all of our different subcommittees. So just to step back and remember all of that, so we established five different subcommittees to really gather stakeholder input at the beginning of this process. We had one for students, one for faculty, one for staff and administrators, one for alumni, and one for the foundation in athletics. So each of these subcommittees were chaired by one of their, one or two of their respective members. So students were led by the students, faculty led by the faculty, so on and so forth. And we really structured it like this, rather than trying to do these more broad listening sessions that oftentimes get, you know, overwhelmed by just dominating voices in the room, and really giving each one of these specific populations a chance to talk amongst themselves. You know, the students held, I think it was seven different listening sessions, just for students to come in and say, all right, what do we want as students? What do we think about the university and its trajectory as students? And preparing a report, and then came and sat down and talked with the search committee for about an hour of, this is what we're hearing, this is what we're seeing, and this is what we're saying as students. So it really gave each one of these groups an opportunity to deeply participate in the process and sit down with the search committee and talk with them as we were getting ready to, and then eventually posting the position. So the position was just posted, I believe, I want to say four weeks ago. We've been working with Russell Reynolds, the search firm we contracted with, to both vet applicants and go and recruit different applicants. I think we're seeing a lot of strength in the applicant pool. I think everyone's feeling very positive, and we're heading in the right direction. There's a lot of interest out there. I think Boise State is in a very desirable position for the next university president, because one thing we've heard from every subcommittee is Boise State is on an incredible trajectory, and we're not looking, you know, we don't, we don't need someone to come in here and fix it up. It's not some kind of fix-up job. It's someone who needs to come in and help maintain the trajectory that they're on. We heard that from all five subcommittees. So I think, I think the search committee is feeling very positive about it right now. We're in a little bit of a lull period, just as we receive applications, and waiting to see that quality of applicant pool as they come in. And when they come in, then the search committee will, will start attacking that, and we'll move on to the next steps, and we'll have more updates for everyone as we get there.
Yeah. We'll have an interim meeting next Monday where we'll take a look at the applications we received to date, and I think everybody appreciates this is a very delicate process here. We want to attract the best candidates. In order to attract the best candidates, there requires some level of confidentiality. So we're going through that process, and then I think on July 28th, the application deadline is July 18th. And if we've determined at that point that we have sufficient quality candidates, then we'll close the application process and start vetting and ranking the candidates, and we'll have that meeting on July 28th, I believe, right? I think it was really enlightening to me, each one of the subcommittee reports, and you can imagine they are all of different flavors. The faculty subcommittee report was written more like a dissertation. I don't know how many comments we had from faculty. There were hundreds of participants in that process. And then the student report, when they came in, it was, it was really interesting to hear the students talk about their love for the university, and they particularly highlighted the blue-collar nature of Boise State University. And they said, you know, we're, we're kind of like the Can Do University, and they embraced that culture that's been created there. So anyway, it's been a great process so far. It's ongoing, and we'll get back to you.
Thank you, Chairman Turnbull, and thank you, Mr. Reiber. I appreciate that work. That's a heavy lift, and our Chairman Leibig is vice chair of that group as well, so.
Yeah, but I'd just like to thank David. Well, I'd just like to thank you for your leadership, and Matthew, your support. I mean, it's been tremendous. And the only thing I would emphasize, I think, David, you covered it, is how important confidentiality is to this. And we often, and we have times in our past been criticized for not being transparent, and when we want to be transparent, but in this case, I think what people need to appreciate is the best candidates who are currently sitting in very senior roles in universities will not apply if they, if they believe there's a risk that their candidacy would become public, because it puts their current position at risk. And so, you know, confidentially, the confidentiality that Mr. Turnbull talked about is not our, because of our, of our desire to not communicate and not be transparent, it's because we want to get the best possible president for Boise State University, and to do that, this is just part of the process. So I just wanted to emphasize the point that I thought you made that was important. Thank you.
If I may, Chairman Leibig, and kind of balanced against, of course, the importance of confidentiality and the importance of this search, the Board is amply prepared to comply with what we, we know we'll need to comply with in terms of public records and open meeting law. So just wanted to make that clear to attach to this, that we're very sensitive to the point at which the public gets to participate and gets more information related to this process.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And then moving on in the PPGA agenda, there's a work session, and I think turn that, or is that? I'm being the new chair here. I want to say I had the smallest agenda.
You did great in your first.
Finished quickly, but I may have.
Much better than Mr. Gilbert.
Overstepped into the next place, so. Thank you.
Jen, I think the floor is yours.
Thank you. Would you like me to move so everyone? Okay, all right. Wanted to lay out the process that the Board and the institutions of higher education have been involved in related to Senate Bill 1198, which had been a topic of our open forum earlier this morning. By way of background and reminder for our Board, Senate Bill 1198 titled "The Freedom of Inquiry in Higher Education Act" takes effect on July 1st. The law prohibits state higher education institutions from engaging in certain, quote-unquote, "diversity, equity, inclusion activities." The law may require certain organizational changes and impact certain programs on campus. However, the law also recognizes explicitly protections for academic freedom and research, creative works, and teaching, and, quote, "the free discussion of ideas in the classroom setting." Due to the effective date of that law, which is July 1st, the institutions of higher education worked in earnest with the Office of the State Board to build a process that complies both with the Constitution and the law and pre-existing principles that this Board has articulated and reaffirmed numerous times. This Board asked the Office of the State Board of Education to proceed with building a process consistent with, with that law, and I'm very proud of where we've landed. And I'm looking out now at a room with our presidents, our provosts, our general counsel, our faculty senate chairs, and others, and I just want to thank everyone and commend them for really leaning into this moment so we could find a path forward that, that really strikes the right note in terms of compliance with the law and the practical challenges of implementation on campus. And so I, I just want to thank everyone who is in the room, who has worked so diligently with us to make that happen. The process memo that the Board put together and issued on May 16th has been reviewed by the Attorney General's Office, and we, and the Attorney General's Office confirmed its consistency with the law. That review was based on the memo as written, and so I'll take some time to walk through for the Board, the parameters of what the Office put together, and I would encourage anyone who hasn't read the memo to do so, because how it is written is not necessarily how it's been betrayed, portrayed outside of the, the working group that has put so much effort into this process. We will continue to partner with the AG's Office on further questions of interpretation and are already doing so. Again, given the comments made during open session, I believe it would be valuable to discuss the memo. The bill has inspired a lot of very strong feelings, but I think, again, we worked hard to pay attention to the words, and the words themselves have permitted us to build a path that fulfills both our legal and moral obligations, as I think we were rightly called upon to pay attention to earlier this morning. I think it's worth remembering, too, that this, this body has an academic freedom and academic responsibility policy already in place, Policy 3B, which sets forth a variety of parameters that are consistent where we landed with this memo. So it includes, among other things, statements such as, "Students may not be directed or otherwise compelled to personally affirm, adopt, or adhere to any particular political, religious, or philosophical tenets or ideology. Faculty may not refuse to enroll or teach a student because of the student's beliefs, interpretations, or applications of knowledge. Faculty have the responsibility to facilitate pluralistic learning and work environments, but shall not require others to make personal or political choices against their beliefs or values." And this body also adopted a resolution last year in December that encouraged our institutions to take actions to protect speakers' rights to freedom of expression, including controversial, unpopular, or offensive expression, and to cultivate and protect academic freedom and academic responsibility in our bodies. To that end, I think it's important to lead with a discussion of what this bill considers to be exceptions to, to the law. So it states that the law shall not be construed to limit research, limit creative works, limit activities of student organizations that are not using state funds, limit the appearance of unpaid guest speakers or performers where attendance is voluntary, or limit academic freedom of any individual faculty member, or to limit free. free discussion of ideas in the classroom setting. And those parameters are really important, I think, as we think about what, what the bill does move to restrict. The restrictions provide that students cannot be compelled to take DEI-related courses except as part of an exempted program. Institutions cannot require solicit, or solicit, or incentivize faculty to participate or apply DEI practices or include DEI-related content in any course. And institutions may seek board exemption for specific academic degree requirements where the course of study is primarily focused on racial, ethnic, or gender studies. Now, I am, I am paraphrasing, but this language also comes directly from this bill. So given those restrictions, and then given the exceptions that, that I've also articulated, the institutions of higher education, the four years and the two years, and the Office of the State Board worked to prepare an exemption process related to summer coursework specifically because it's a July 1st effective date. We have some courses that may overlap that July 1st effective date or start immediately thereafter. And so we asked the institutions to prioritize the review of summer courses to determine whether this bill would impact and require an exemption. So the process we've laid out, and we actually created a flow chart, too, to hopefully assist with this analysis. The questions include, first, whether the course is taken for credit, whether the course is actually required, right? Because the idea is that you can't compel a student to take a course. So we're looking at required coursework in the classroom. Is it a DEI-related course as defined by the law? And is there an alternative to the DEI-related course? Only where we have a class that is credit-bearing, that is required, that is DEI-related, and for which no alternative exists, are institutions asked to submit a request for exemption. It's worth noting, too, that the definition of DEI is defined as instruction that is derived from or that promotes tenants or concepts of critical theory. And because the critical theory itself was not defined, was informed by a list of terms that kind of span a very wide range, the, the Office of the State Board has discussed the definition of critical theory as Western European philosophy initiated with the work of the Frankfurt School and, and those specifically listed concepts. So as we work through this analysis, we get to the exemptions process. And the exemptions that an institution may submit are for academic degree program requirements clearly established as primarily focused on racial, ethnic, or gender studies. To that end, we've received exemption requests from our institutions of higher education as follows. BSU has submitted requests for critical theory minor and their gender studies minor based on, again, courses offered this summer, and also for their social work programs, their bachelor's and their master's programs. CWI has sought an exemption for their associate of arts and social work program, again, based on a course offered this summer. ISU has sought exemptions for their gender and sexuality studies minor, their social work programs, both their bachelor's and their master's program. And then LCSC has sought an exemption related to their social work bachelor's program and their women and gender studies minor. And University of Idaho has sought an exemption for their women's, gender, and sexuality studies minor. These requests for exemptions, again, are based on courses offered this summer. So as we move into the fall, we expect that the institutions will be in a position to analyze their fall offerings, and we may have additional classes that would give rise for exemptions attached to these specific programs. So this is going to be an evolution. As we've talked about with the institutions of higher education, these are new shoes. There will be blisters. We're all getting comfortable and, and learning what works practically and what will need to be revised as we move forward. But again, I'm very proud of the work that our institutions have put in on, on a very short timeframe and the effort that they've exhibited in kind of working through this analysis and, and analyzing their courses. I'm also very heartened by the discussions that I'm hearing around making sure that students are in a position to make informed choices and that we're thinking about what are we requiring of our students? Why are we, why are we requiring those things? And what alternatives may be appropriate economically feasible, what may not be feasible? I think all of these are really valuable conversations to be had in higher education. It doesn't necessarily mean there will be change, but I think we will see some, some adjustments, too. So that was a lot. Any questions?
Before I open up to questions, Jen, I'd just like to thank you and board staff and all the institutions for working so diligently to put this, this guidance together. And I, I know this is a huge and heavy lift. And the fact that we were able to get to this point before summer school starts is a, is a real credit to, to your leadership. So thank you for that. I'd open the floor up for questions for Jen. Can I, let me just ask this question. This board has spent, a number of years ago, a lot of time writing policy around the importance of freedom of speech and academic freedom. And we debated that. We, I think we all understand how important that is on campuses. I think our speaker this morning was very articulate in why that's important. Is there anything in our guidance that you just went through that is inconsistent with the policies that we've already approved as a board? Or is there, is it at some point going to require us to come back and look at our policies around that freedom of speech and academic freedom to be in compliance with the law?
I don't believe so. Again, there will be opportunities for growth here, but one of the objectives attached to this analysis was compliance with our Constitution as well, and freedom of speech, and academic freedom, and a whole host and body of case law that supports both of those, those concepts. So it, it is a, a challenging balance to strike. But for example, again, the, the plain language of the bill protects academic freedom of individual faculty members and the free discussion of classroom ideas. Now, I think whether our students are prepared to understand necessarily what that means in the classroom environment, we're going to have to do some education there. We're, we're going to have to help them understand their intellectual responsibility to confront ideas that might at sometimes make them feel uncomfortable regardless of, of what that idea is. And help them understand how to articulate their beliefs soundly in, in the academic environment. But no, I, I don't think, I see this guidance as consistent with, again, the Constitution, the law, and existing guidance from this board. And the analysis that we've received from the Attorney General's Office is consistent with that.
One of the concerns I have, and because I think, and you stated this, Jen, is there's a, there's a misconception out in the public, I think, about what this law says and doesn't say. And my fear is, without a really clear understanding, that, that I think it's in this guidance, we could, as the speaker spoke this morning, stifle the kind of very conversations we want to have in the classroom. So I guess I'd be just interested, to me, the train, it's one thing to have a policy that, that Jen just talked about. It's, it's something entirely different to educate all of our faculty and every student on our campus around what, what this is. I guess I, I don't know if we have time to hear from every institution today, but, because we, I think we are going to have a time to revisit this. But I guess I would just encourage our institutions, we've got to have a, a plan. And, and I think it's got to be part of our orientation where when students come on campus, they're taught about our policy around academic freedom and freedom of speech. That's got to be sort of core when they come on campus to what we believe. And then, yes, what this, what this law says and how it's being interpreted. If, if we don't do that for both our faculty, if we don't do it for our faculty, we're going to stifle the conversations we want to have. If we don't do it for our students, we're going to get inundated with complaints around things that are totally, should be happening in our classroom. So I just encourage, I don't, I don't think we have time today. We may put a work session together on this in future. But while I have the mic, I just would really encourage you all to think carefully about how we train our faculty and students. So I'll leave it there.
Yeah. Thank, thank you very much for that, Chairman Leibig. And I, I think that our, our institutions are very much thinking about that and are actively engaged in conversations internally and, and with their faculty and, and their students on those very matters. And we're also thinking in an office perspective about what we can do to help facilitate training and support to the institutions as they look to implement these.
Great. Thank you. Any final comments? All right. John? Is that the end of the PPGA? Yep.
Thank you. Sorry, Chairman Leibig. I was thinking about the complex subject that we just went through. But this concludes the PPGA agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Callie, I believe, I believe Ursa is next. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, President Leibig. We have four items on the Ursa agenda today. And I'd asked Heidi, our chief academic officer, to come up and assist. And our first item is the Board Policy 3N statewide general education. This is the second reading of this policy. Heidi?
Thank you. Heidi Estram, Chief Academic Officer at the State Board, for the record. And I'm joined by Ms. Patty Sanchez, our Academic Affairs Program Manager, who will assist with, with the program proposal later in the agenda. This is a second reading of the general education policy that was presented for a first reading at the previous board meeting. There's been no, there have been no comments or input since then. There have been just some minor word changes to that opening paragraph, and you'll see those in red in your board materials, but nothing substantive, just some editing. So I'm happy to take any questions.
If there's no questions, I'll move to motion. I move to approve the second reading of proposed amendments to Board Policy 3N statewide general education as submitted in Attachment 1.
We have a motion and a second by Sean. Any discussion or questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Our second item is Board Policy 3G, post-secondary program review and approval. This is a first reading. Heidi, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. This is our policy that governs any new academic programs that come to the board for various kinds of approvals and reviews. The, the bulk of the changes are clarifications suggested by continued work with the institutions as we, as we worked through some pieces that hadn't been identified and where there were issues of uncertainty that we wanted to clear up with this policy. So that, those are the main changes there, guiding institutions to, to various levels of approval or different kinds of steps that they might use for approval. And then I'll call your attention to the addition of, of number nine, program exemption process. This begins to put in policy what Executive Director White just shared about the response to what will be Idaho Code Section 675909 related to how the board will address this exemption process. So this addition puts in policy how, how we will handle those exemptions in ways, in ways similar to other kinds of processes that we use at, at the board level. So again, happy to take any questions.
So are we delegating that exemption authority to staff? Is that essentially what we're doing here?
Essentially. It, it reads that institutions seeking board exemption must, must submit programs in accordance with a timeframe and template developed by the Executive Director or designee. This is common, a common practice for very, other kinds of exceptions or things that might, areas that might need review by this, by the State Board Office.
Jen or Heidi, is, do we have to report those exemptions to any, to the legislature or the Attorney General's Office? Or we just keep track of them and if there's a request?
We, we will monitor. And then I believe the institutions are figuring out how to make sure, again, students have an informed opportunity to, with respect to their programmatic selection. So, so they are able to determine whether or not they want to proceed based on what's been identified.
Thank you. Any other comments or, I'll move to motion. I move to approve the first reading of proposed amendments to Board Policy 3G, post-secondary program review and approval as submitted in Attachment 1.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, motion passes. Callie?
Our third item is Lewis Clark State College Direct Entry Master of Science in Nursing. This is an action item. Heidi, I will start with you for the presentation.
Thank you. And I'll immediately turn it over to Patty, Patty Sanchez to provide the context for this proposal.
Thank you, Mr. President, Chair Roach, and members of the board. As a reminder, all program proposals go through a 30, 30-day review process with our office, consistent with the policy. It provides institutions and staff an opportunity to provide feedback, particularly as it relates to existing programs being offered by our institutions. With that, I'll just go through, quickly through the review process that we went through with this proposal. The direct entry MSN was added to LC's three-year plan last year for an anticipated start date of fall 2025. The proposal was submitted in March, early March, and concluded its review in April 4th. It was shared with the provost, the council, and academic affairs and programs on May 1st. The results of that review did not result in any concerns. The University of Idaho did submit a letter of support, noted interest in collaborating to address Idaho's urgent nursing shortage. As a reminder, probably a year to the day, the University of Idaho did submit a proposal for a direct MSN program last year that was not considered by the board at that time. Statewide responsibilities, ISU currently has a statewide responsibility to offer the MS in nursing and shares that responsibility with Boise State in Region 3. Based on staff review, there was no, excuse me, no conflict with ISU's statewide responsibility. There are no fees associated with LC's request. It is below the fiscal threshold for Executive Director to approve. However, it's been deferred to the board for their review and consideration, which that, in policy, provides the ability for the Executive Director to do that. Given that information, I'll go ahead and turn it over to LC to introduce their program.
Thank you, Patty.
Just need the green button there.
Thank you, President Leibig, Chair Roach, members of the board. My name is Dr. Fred Chilson. I'm the provost and vice president for Academic Affairs at Lewis Clark State College. With me is Dr. Krista Harwick, our interim dean for the School of Professional Studies. Today, we are requesting consideration of a Master's of Science in Nursing with a direct entry pathway. Dr. Harwick will provide a narrative, and then at the end, we're open for questions.
Good morning, President Leibig, Chair Roach, and board members. As Provost Chilson mentioned, for the record, I am Krista Harwick, and I serve as interim dean for the School of Professional Studies overseeing healthcare education programs at LC State. Thank you for the opportunity to present the LC State proposal for a direct entry Master of Science in Nursing program. This program is designed to meet critical workforce needs in healthcare management and clinical leadership while expanding access to advanced nursing education for individuals holding non-nursing bachelor's degrees. It will prepare graduates to serve in pivotal leadership roles across Idaho's healthcare systems, supporting quality care delivery, organizational effectiveness, and strategic workforce planning. Idaho's healthcare sector is experiencing a significant shortage, not only of direct care nurses, but also of qualified nursing leaders who are essential to managing increasingly complex clinical environments. First and foremost, as this is a pre-licensure program, graduates will contribute to an increased number of nurses entering practice. Additionally, this program will prepare graduates to take on roles such as nurse managers, clinical supervisors, quality improvement coordinators, and healthcare administrators. It will provide health systems with leaders trained in systems thinking, policy implementation, interprofessional communication, and organizational change. And it will support rural and community health facilities that require local leadership talent to remain sustainable. to remain sustainable and effective. This direct-entry MSN in Nursing Leadership Program is specifically designed for individuals with bachelor's degrees in non-nursing fields who seek a career transition into nursing. Between 2017 and 2024, an average of 15% of students in each cohort of our pre-licensure Bachelors of Nursing program had previously earned a non-nursing bachelor's degree. For many years, students voiced frustration with having to complete a second bachelor's degree rather than having the opportunity to pursue a graduate degree. In the fall of 2024, we initiated ELSI State's first graduate program, the Master of Science in Nursing, Nursing Leadership in Healthcare. Now that we offer this degree, it makes sense to provide a direct-entry pathway for our students. The curriculum in this program will integrate core nursing theory and clinical competence development for RN licensure, specialized training in leadership, healthcare policy, finance, and evidence-based management practices, and clinical and administrative experiences that emphasize leadership in a variety of healthcare settings. This format enables an efficient, yet comprehensive entry into both the nursing profession and its leadership ranks. ELSI State is uniquely qualified to deliver this program in our region. We have an established and respected undergraduate nursing program with consistently strong NCLEX pass rates and strong regional partnerships. Specifically, collaborations and pathways with our sister institutions are strong and successful. We have a proven track record of preparing nursing graduates for success in both clinical and leadership roles across rural and urban settings. And recognizing that one significant challenge to healthcare education is clinical placements, we have deep connections with healthcare providers across the state with whom we work to create innovative opportunities for clinical learning. According to the American Association of Colleges of Nursing 2024 Annual Survey on Enrollment, the primary barrier to admitting all qualified applicants at nursing schools continues to be clinical placement sites. ELSI State has a well-established network of clinical partners who value our programs and recruit our graduates for employment. This program aligns with the Idaho State Board of Education's strategic priorities by expanding graduate education opportunities for adult learners and second-degree students, by producing practice-ready leaders who can address Idaho's healthcare workforce shortages and guide delivery reform, and by leveraging existing infrastructure and clinical partnerships to deliver a high-impact, targeted graduate program with efficient time to degree. ELSI State has received state-appropriated funds to support nursing education expansion. We've received a million-dollar donation from the Blue Cross for scholarship support for nursing students, and more than $100,000 from donors to support learning lab expansions. ELSI State is well situated to expand nursing education offerings. Graduates of this program will contribute to improving healthcare outcomes by leading teams, guiding care transitions, and implementing quality improvement initiatives, supporting rural healthcare access through local leadership who understand regional challenges and opportunities, and by reducing turnover and improving organizational resilience by filling roles that typically remain unfilled or filled through expensive recruitment from outside the state. So in conclusion, the proposed direct-entry MSN with an emphasis in nursing leadership addresses a need in Idaho's healthcare workforce by preparing competent, compassionate, and strategically-minded nurse leaders. It reflects ELSI State's commitment to high-impact, career-focused education, and it supports the state's broader goals of improving healthcare access, quality, and sustainability. Thank you, and we're happy to stand for any questions you may have.
I'd like to say thank you for, for all the work you do in this area. You, you have a wonderful reputation and have done a great job, and just appreciate all your efforts in recognizing that this needs to come forward. Are there comments or questions from Board members?
Chairman?
Yes, Sean.
Thank you. I echo Committee Chairman Roach's comments. I also appreciate LCSC's work in this, this area. I'm a little, I'd like to approve this program, but I'd also like to approve the program that the University of Idaho brought forward last spring. I believe there's a huge need for, in the healthcare arena, whether it's nursing doctors, fill in the medical field. And I'm concerned that we're doing this, not doing this collaboratively and building these programs together. I recognize that each institution isn't likely to put together a program that doesn't pay for itself and isn't market-driven, but, and at the same time, I feel like if we put all of our system together to come up with similar programs, that we'd be doing better and leveraging our resources instead of competing programs pulling together towards the goal. So I also recognize saying that, as we've talked a lot about collaboration on, on this proposal and other proposals, that it's incumbent upon me as a Board member to try to define that framework and what does collaboration mean. So, so I guess just a statement of kind of where I'm at with this. I'm conflicted, because I want to be supportive. I appreciate the work that ELSI does in this arena, but we also have other institutions that either are or can be in this space as well, and I would rather see a proposal that all of you come together and give to us.
I might just point out that Lewis Clark State College and the University of Idaho are within 35 miles of each other, and they're both in Region 1. So, you know, they have responsibilities to, to North Idaho, and so, and plus, there's a lot of competing nursing programs within the area. There's the Montana Schools, there's Washington State, Gonzaga, Walla Walla Community College brings in a program to Clarkston, and then there's the privates that, that provide, the private institutions that provide education. And we're continually battling the clinical site placement, and that's a challenge. And it's my understanding that some of the private educators are now paying for, for those clinical sites, which makes it even more difficult. So we have a unique opportunity here to really provide additional services for the citizens of the state of Idaho, and I'm, I'm really supportive of the long history of Lewis Clark and what you've accomplished and achieved. I, I do think there's more opportunity to grow, and, and there's obviously a focus on this from the Legislature. And Board Member Kio is doing a lot of work in this area, serving on various committees, and we want to be responsive to the Legislature and their, their needs, the needs that have been expressed by the, the community, especially in North Idaho. So I think it's my hope as well that a collaboration could occur, and it, it would never work if the two institutions are competing against each other. And even ideally, it would be wonderful if Idaho State University is recognized as the state leader in health education, they have a long history of that, and have a lot of expertise in that area. And hopefully, they could even provide some guidance in collaboration. And we, as a Board, have work to do in this area, and we plan to, to do more work, and the State Board Office plans to do more work in analyzing the needs and, and digesting this material and data that's produced by this working committee formed by the Legislature, and be responsive to the needs there. So, yeah, I just wondered if any other Board members had comments or questions around this.
Mr. President?
Yes, Debbie.
I'm interested to hear a little more of Sean's thinking along the lines. I, I agree that we can be, as a Board, more definitive in what we mean by collaboration, what we mean by partnership, so that the expectations are clear, and it's not frustrating on the institution side to work on something, come to us, hey, it's not quite there, or, or whatever that is. I, I think we have a part in this. I, I would, again, like to hear a little more from Sean on, on how you see these things coming together.
Chairman Leibig and Superintendent Crichtfield, thank you for that. I, I guess what I, first of all, it feels like we've asked in the past on several different proposals for collaboration, and, and either we get an MOU, or we get, well, we tried, but it, it won't, it won't work. And then, but also, the Board hasn't defined what collaboration means. And perhaps in, in, in this instance, asking ELSI and U of I to sit down together and look at shared academic programs, shared faculty appointments, working together to find clinical sites, sharing the, the resources, the, the resources that both U of I and ELSI in medical education field are, each are, are different, and, but collectively are powerful in terms of training nurses, for example, and other components of the medical education. So specifically saying, we'd like to see you share academic programming, faculty appointments, clinical site utilization, and, and then the resources, the labs, and the different facilities that they have, and build a program together that they can offer to our students. Those are just some ideas that, that I've thought about.
Mr. Chair, as a follow-up?
Yeah, Debbie.
We have listed on our agenda, this is an action item for ELSI. Again, Sean is, I guess, suggesting that, you know, as we look at approvals, that if we're approving one, we approve the other. I, I guess, are there alternate actions today, or is the fact that we have this one on the agenda, we're approving what's in front of us or we're not? Are, are we looking this, at, at what we're trying, what we're talking about comprehensively? I guess, a better stated would be, what are our choices or options in light of the conversation that we're having? That's probably a better way to get to my question.
Board Member Crichtfield, I, I, this is Callie, and I would suggest that we could do one of two things. We could move to approve the Lewis Clark State College program and encourage them to work with the University of Idaho and Idaho State to think of ways to collaborate in this specific program. Or we could table this particular request by the Lewis Clark State College and ask the University of Idaho and Lewis Clark State College to come back to us in August and report on their work with regard to collaboration around some of the items that Board Kio has mentioned.
If I could, yeah, Mr. Turnbull.
Yeah, I think what, or Member Kio is getting at should send a pretty strong signal to the institutions that this has been a big point of discussion that we've had this board meeting, and we, we need to provide clarity as a Board, but we also need to see action from the institutions on more, on better collaboration. So, you know, I, I agree with Callie's approach. I'm, I'm probably more inclined to just table it and come back after we've had further investigation.
I applaud the work that's been done on 3Z, but I think we're not there yet. I think it's incumbent on this Board to clearly define what collaboration options are, and I think there are several different approaches that can be taken, all of which would be acceptable under our concerns about collaboration. I think that will require some research into what other places are doing, whether that's a joint diploma, whether, anyway, there, I think there's a whole raft of things there. I, I'm very supportive of this program, but I also recognize that we're at, at a really important point for education in Idaho in terms of recognizing the need, absolutely imperative need for collaboration. So I, I will be supportive of tabling this and, and with some very clear direction to the institutions about coming back with options for collaboration.
A difficult item is, you may recall that in the PPGA, in our measurements that we have, the institutions are measured on graduation rates, retention, and enrollment. So what is their incentive to collaborate? You know, it, we would have to take into account that if they are collaborating, that could possibly be rewarded in some way, through measurement or recognition, or just some way, especially if the, the diploma, if, if we say the student can choose which, which university awards the diploma, or it's a dual. Dr. Clark, did you want to talk about that particular item?
Madam Chairman, I, just a comment, and that is, I think the other issue that we have to take into consideration is the accrediting body and who is accredited to, to deliver this, that, that's an issue that's come up in the conversation as well. So I, I do think some research is going to be necessary to see what kind of options really are open in terms of collaboration and partnership agreements. I didn't mean to interrupt what you were saying.
President Leibig?
Mr. Turnbull?
I, I think these are maybe two issues that can be joined. We need to make sure that the Board establishes the proper incentives for collaboration, and if it's a matter of reporting about who gets credit, you know, or how this flows through to your metrics, then I think we can solve for that.
Any other comments or questions?
I just want, I, the, the need is so, and Sean commented, the need is so great out there, as defined by just the number of traveling nurses that are in our state, or the number of Idahoans that have to go out of state for medical care because we simply can't provide it. So when the need is as great as it is today, it's just hard for me to make sense of us putting artificial handcuffs on institutions that can help us solve the problem. So I have a really hard time understanding why we, the University of Idaho can't help us address this critical, critical need, and, but at the same time, I, while I could support your recommendation, David, I, I'm a little hesitant to slow ELSI down, given the nature of the problem. So if there was a middle ground where we, because I absolutely support this program, the incredible work that's been done, if there was a way to keep moving on that, but at the same time, be, have stronger language that I think that you had, Callie, which is work on collaboration, it would be sort, it would be much stronger to say, look, we want the University of Idaho to play in this space in a collaborative way, how do we get that done? And come back to us in August. And I, you know, I don't know what the language is, but I, I could support either of those approaches, but that's where my, I am.
So, that's where I am. I mean, look, as, as a Board member of the largest health system in the state, I can tell you that a non-trivial amount of our time at a Board level is spent on, you know, these personnel issues. I personally don't think it makes sense to slow down either. I think there are areas where collaboration is, I think it's important, but the reality is there, there are high need and, and high demand areas where we need multiple programs. I think this is one. I personally am happy approving this program today. I'd like to see the University of Idaho program come forward and approve that. I think then we could, let's get the program stood up, then we can look at resource sharing, we can look at changing the incentives. The reality is the incentives don't align, you know, and, and, look, in any business, you know this, you know this, we all know this, incentives follow, or behavior follows incentives. We can change the incentives potentially over time. We're not going to do that in the next five minutes. I don't- I don't like seeing us slow the opportunity to move forward and meet the need. I think that the University of Idaho program should come forward for approval. I think the LC program should be approved. I think they can both succeed in the marketplace. I think that, but I also think part of what needs to occur here has been suggested many times and talked about, and kind of has fallen off the radar for a number of reasons, and that's some sort of a, we have parts of this happening with the UME Committee now, we have parts of it happening with the GME Committee, but, you know, was a broader kind of healthcare summit, particularly around nursing education and those kinds of things. That's never happened. If we want to set the table, that's kind of one of the first things. But to artificially, to your point, hold back, or, you know, the progress on these programs, doesn't make, from, I put my healthcare board, my health system board hat on, does not make any sense. And so, I would be in favor of approving this program. I'd like to see the University of Idaho program come forward for approval, and then I would also like to see, following, these are tough to do in a short period of time, a bigger conversation involving all the institutions about how we bring multiple programs to the table, some cooperative, some competitive, to start increasing the pipeline.
I believe Board Member Crichtfield had a comment.
I think, actually, Bill's comments took in part of what I was going to say, so I'll wait to hear further discussion.
President Leibig. I, I think, Bill, you make some excellent points. I guess, you know, one of the things in a program like this that I'm hearing is the clinical placements are really important. So, does that make sense that the University of Idaho and that LC are collaborating, instead of fighting for these clinical placements, that they're joining forces to have a more effective placement in clinics? And so, those are some of the things that I'm looking at. You know, we have the critical need. I don't want to slow anything up. What I'm suggesting is that if we just give approval, and we keep giving approvals without any kind of check-in point for this collaborative effort, are we really making progress in that regard? So if we want to move forward with this, fine, I'd sort of like to have some kind of condition that they report back and show us progress.
Well, they're required to do that anyway. Every academic program is required to kind of do that on an ongoing basis, and I would argue that you're right, clinical placements are a challenge. There's absolutely no doubt, they're a challenge in every area of the state. What's interesting is necessity tends to be the mother of invention, as it relates to some of, you know, creating and opportunities for clinical placements. And if, you know, part of what we're allowing is these programs to, yes, I think they should collaborate, but to be entrepreneurial enough to find additional clinical placements. And we've seen that in multiple cases where they've been able to work with industry partners, with systems, to create additional clinical opportunities. And so, I don't think it's an either-or. I think approving both, to be, have viable programs and to sort of meet the ongoing checks that Heidi and the team kind of are looking at, once a program is approved anyway, they're going to have to be doing that. I do think on the back end, cooperating on clinical placements, especially vis-à-vis, you know, the private providers, you know, that are taking clinical placements, I think that's a totally appropriate conversation for us to have, but I don't think it should slow what we're doing, or needs to slow what we're doing, Dave.
Chairman Leibig, I have a question.
Yeah, Sean.
So, it's just kind of a process question. So last June, the U of I had the proposal for their MSN program, or their direct entry program, and that was in our board packet, but it was pulled off the agenda at the last minute. So how do, can we just bring that back today? Is that appropriate? If we're, if what I'm hearing is we can do both programs, are there support for doing that, recognizing the overall need? Is that a possibility? Or?
I believe that MSN program was brought before our Ursa Committee. It's gone through that process, but it hasn't been, the U of I's program, it hasn't been shared with the public. So that information, I think, would have to come forward at the next meeting. I have one question for Krista. Is this program ready to go August 1, or fall semester?
Chair Roach, thank you for the question. Initially, that had been our plan. As you know, once approval is given by the State Board of Education, it does have to go to our accrediting agency, the Northwest Commission, and depending on timelines there, that might slow the process too. So we might be looking at a spring '26. But the program is ready, we have the infrastructure, we have the clinical sites, we've been doing this for a long time, so we're ready to go with the curriculum, and, and so, thank you for the question.
I have a question. Go ahead. Sean?
Chairman Leibig, August is not that far away. Is it possible to bring both proposals back to August with opportunity for collaboration? And is that, that's a question, and then a comment, is that our universities, our institutions collaborate in lots of spaces, but for some reason in this space, we ask for collabor, my experience has been, we ask for collaboration, and then for whatever reason, it doesn't happen, and then we don't, as a board, necessarily either want to follow up unless it's on the, one of our routine checkpoints, or we don't follow through. So, just, that's just a statement, but I guess the question is, could we just have both programs come back in August?
I, President Leibig, I kind of think I hear the majority of the board expressing to table it until August. I can bring that forward, we can vote on it and see where we land.
Yeah, I'm not sure I'm there. If, if you said to me that practically speaking, the earliest we can implement it is spring of '26, and we could defer this to August without impacting that, I'd be there. But if you say you can be ready to go this fall, given the urgent need out there, I'd be more inclined to not slow down LC, but set clear expectations that the U of I program comes back in August with an expectation that it's going to, there's going to be collaboration, whatever that means embedded in that, in that proposal. That's sort of where I am, but I don't know where the rest of the board is.
Krista, can you answer that, or Fred?
Thank you for the question. I'll defer to purpose, Chilson.
Thank you, Chair Roach. It really is dependent upon Northwest, and typically, they say it take, it could take as long as six months. Normally, it takes, you know, in our last graduate program approval, it was two weeks. So it's all in their hands, historically speaking. We've never waited that long, that I'm aware of. So I think in terms of if it were approved today, we would submit, and we'd have a relatively short turnaround, which in theory could be, we could implement by fall. We currently offer the classes anyway, so it's just a matter of getting the program approved.
Bill?
We're not talking about substantive amendments to this program. So delaying a couple of months doesn't make any sense. You know, if we were talking about making substantive amendments to any part of this, I could see that. We understand the need, let's approve the program, let's bring the U of I one forward. Then also, we have the, at August, to what Sean, what you said, but sort of delaying this for a couple of months in hopes of some sort of nebulous kind of cooperation, but without necessarily amending the program, it doesn't necessarily make any sense to me. Let's approve it, move forward, let's bring the other one forward, and then we have the opportunity for a longer-term conversation.
Yeah, President Leibig.
Yeah, David.
I'm in agreement with Bill. If you think you can get there, I don't want to delay it, and we have a responsibility as a board to come back with better guidance, so.
Chairman Roach.
I'm okay with.
Thank you, David.
Chairman, I think it's important for us to recognize what we just heard, they can't start the process of accreditation until this board acts.
Right.
So if there is a chance that they could still start it in the fall, I think it's incumbent on us to take action.
Board Member Crichtfield?
Thank you, jumping into, or tagging on to, I guess, the comments from fellow board members. I'm seeing this as an "and," not an "or," that the goals that Sean has outlined, that I think we share for partnership, and I still am going to beat a drum on us defining what that means and what that looks like, that if the program's approved today, and the, I guess, the feeling is that the University of Idaho has a place there, approving the programs doesn't mean we, as a board, don't guide and direct what that looks like. We get the programs approved, we initiate the accreditation, but we will still have a role to reach the goals that we have in working together. Is that accurate? Is that where we are?
I think that's accurate.
Collaboration doesn't seem that complex to me in terms of outlining what the criteria. Sean, you started that, you know, can we jointly develop curriculum? Can we jointly utilize faculty? Can we jointly develop clinicals? Can we jointly utilize our fixed cost lab space? I mean, you know, you could pretty quickly look at that spectrum and say, where is it possible for us to work together to maximize the limited resources we have as an institution? I mean, that's what I care about. Yes?
Yeah, President Leibig, I think it's important to note that we have collectively been collaborating, and one of the latest considerations was having multiple pathways, that each institution would develop a core, and students would have the option to do our pathway, ISU's pathway, potentially U of I's pathway, but we would collectively work that together. We hadn't finished any type of collaboration to finish that out, but those talks have been consistently taking place.
Okay, I will attempt to articulate what we've talked about in this motion. I move to approve Lewis Clark State College's direct entry MSN proposal and direct representatives from Lewis Clark State College and the University of Idaho to provide a report on their partnership on the DEI MSN program at the August 2025 board meeting. This report must detail specific plans for institutional collaboration, including but not limited to shared academic programming, faculty appointments, clinical site utilization, and other joint efforts designed to address regional healthcare needs through innovative, flexible, and collaborative approaches.
We have a motion.
That's pretty darn good.
Is that a second?
Yes.
Questions or discussion on the motion? Dr. Clark?
Just a question, that action in no way slows down or deters Lewis Clark's ability to go forward with accreditation, because it, their program is being approved by that motion. I got a little bit lost in the additions to the motion.
That's the way I heard it.
Yeah. Board Member.
Heidi?
Just, yes, the move is to approve, so it was, it was still continued accreditation.
Yes, Chairman, can you read it one more time? Just want to make sure we're clear, since this is in about face, yeah.
This is the lawyer, and you.
Yes, it is, I can't, I can't, I can't stop myself. I move to approve Lewis Clark State College's direct entry MSN proposal and direct representatives from Lewis Clark State College and the University of Idaho to provide a report on their partnership on the direct entry MSN program at the August 2025 board meeting. I could also add, "and" to bring forward the DEI, direct entry MSN, University of Idaho program as well. This report must detail specific plans for institutional collaboration, including but not limited to shared academic programming, faculty appointments, clinical site utilization, and other joint efforts designed to address regional healthcare needs through innovative, flexible, and collaborative approaches.
May I ask another question? Sorry.
Dr. Clark?
I didn't hear any mention of Idaho State, who has the statewide mandate for health. Are they not a part of this collaborative? I mean, this is becoming very complicated, but I didn't hear that. And it was my understanding that, from comments made earlier, that Lewis Clark is already working with Idaho State. It seems to me they would have to be a player in all of this, but maybe I'm missing.
Karen?
One, just a question, is Idaho State involved in the program as currently defined?
So, they've been involved in helping define what programming we would do. We went to ISU and Boise State originally, and partnered to figure out a pathway that made sense, where we weren't duplicating efforts, and this is what we came up with on this particular partnership. So ISU was supportive of it, Boise State was supportive of it, and of course, University of Idaho was supportive.
President Pemberton?
Thank you, President Leibig, Chair Roach. I would just like to suggest that perhaps two separate motions might be cleaner in this instance, because it is somewhat convoluted. So I would, I would ask if that could be the case, and then also ask that there would be clarity that this motion is referring very specifically to a direct entry MSN program only.
Chairman.
Yes, Jen. Yes, Jen.
Board Member Roach, can you read the motion again, and can we move forward to the vote? Are we prepared to do that?
Ask me that again?
Are we prepared to move forward with the original motion?
As presented by Callie.
As presented.
We have a motion to second.
We do have a second?
David seconded.
Okay.
So any further discussion of the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed?
Aye.
Okay, what do we have, seven, one? Motion passes? Yeah.
Press it.
Yes, Heidi?
Just want to clarify which motion passed. The two red were slightly different, and I want to make sure we're on the same page so we can help guide the institutions. The second one mentioned also bringing the U of I program. Okay, I just, I'm not clear if that one was seconded. So, there were, there were two slightly different motions, and they do have some impact on the work we'll do the next couple of months, so I want to make sure we understand it.
Board Member Turnbull, you seconded the second motion, is that correct?
Okay, all right. Let's start over. We're going to back this straight up. Without the.
Okay. Okay.
In the spirit of clarity, let's go through this one more time. Callie, you want to go to motion, please?
I move to approve Lewis Clark State College's direct entry MSN proposal and direct representatives from Lewis Clark State College and the University of Idaho to provide a report on their partnership on the direct entry MSN program at the August board meeting, at which time the University of Idaho will also bring forward their direct entry MSN program. This report must detail specific plans for institutional collaboration, including but not limited to shared academic programming, faculty appointments, clinical site utilization, and other joint efforts designed to address regional healthcare needs through innovative, flexible, and collaborative approaches.
I second it for the second time.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion? Yes? Cindy, yes?
So this actually does approve it, so they can move forward. August, they'll come back with the second part of it. Okay, thank you. And U of I, okay, thank.
Any further questions on the motion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Sean?
Chairman Leibig and Chairman Roach, before we leave this, I have two asks for consideration, and maybe just put them on the table, and then we could carve some time out in August to talk about it. One would be spending more time to defend, to define what collaboration means, and providing a framework to our institutions, not just in this area, but in. framework to our institutions, not just in this area, but in all areas. That's the first ask. And then the second ask is to, maybe a special meeting, or whatever the right terminology is, I've called it a summit for the last year, to bring all of our institutions, the community colleges as well, together to talk about the health care needs across the spectrum, doctors to CNAs and everybody in between, identifying the need, and then identifying how, as a system, each of our institutions, what roles they play to get us there, or get us closer, and what the resources are. That's, so I just put those two things on the table.
Okay, thank you. Callie?
We'll move on to the fourth item. We'll move on to the fourth item on our agenda, which is the dual credit, report, and recommendations.
Heidi?
I might mention that this, there's been a lot of work done on this, and this, we've reported to the board twice, Heidi has, and there have been many stakeholders involved over a two-year period, working on this, Heidi, is that correct?
Thank you, Chair Roach, President Leibig. I'm not sure if you can see my screen. Do you see a slide?
I see the superintendent.
Okay.
Unless you're projecting, Debbie. No. Okay, here we go.
Thank you. Appreciate this opportunity, and I know I'm standing between you and the end of this meeting, so I'll try to keep this somewhat brief. Proposed here is a strategic vision for dual credit in Idaho and three recommendations. These were presented as the fuller report at the previous board meeting in April, where we spent more time discussing these, so I'll be briefer today. Just to remind you that dual credit thrives in Idaho, and it's been a key part of our educational strategy as a state. We are a national leader in providing access for dual credit, thanks largely to the $25 million approximately annual investment through the Advanced Opportunities Program. So the recommendations in front of you provide a framework. They are not policy, and you, as a board, govern through policy. So we don't bring recommendations to you very often, but when it is a particularly high-impact program, it helps us and it helps the institutions to have a sense of the board's vision and goals. And so that's why these recommendations are here in front of you today. You heard yesterday about dual credit from both the students and the faculty, and I think they brought some useful perspectives on its immense value to students and families, and also some of the challenges and opportunities we have to continue to develop dual credit in Idaho. So first, briefly, this vision that you'll see at the top of the screen, it centers students, purpose, and pathways. More dual credit is not always better, and you heard some of that yesterday, some of the unintended consequences of more dual credit. Many students will be served better by packaging dual credit more purposefully and strategically and in line with pathways. That work is already being done at our institutions, but these recommendations would help us continue to bolster that effort. The first recommendation there, then, under number one, establishing clear and measurable metrics of success. We need metrics that are then in line with that vision. Institutions haven't always known what to do except to grow, because that has felt like the mandate in our state. And maybe that still is, but we would like to work with our institutional partners and be more strategic about that, and develop those metrics. We need to develop even what our reporting looks like. National reporting is often challenging about Idaho, because it doesn't take into account some of the models we have, and so the reporting is not always as reliable as we would like it to be. Secondly, this idea of a credit with a purpose framework, that's what I mentioned earlier, developing and articulating frameworks that are aligned with career and college pathways for students. So for example, some students might be best served by taking one dual credit class, others might be best served by taking kind of the equivalent of one semester's worth. And so we, through advising and through developing more intentional materials, we can help students with that. And then third, there are a number of recommendations that we could move forward with related to enhancing our dual credit collaboration and systemness. Dual credit thrives kind of without borders, and that causes some unintended consequences for our students. You might know that last year, we attempted to put forward a funding proposal for a transcript system. This has been talked about numerous times by this board, and there hasn't been the opportunity to continue with that. So knowing that that isn't forthcoming, we're trying to think about how to work really carefully, and also around best practices, around partnerships between more local or more regional high schools and post-secondary institutions. The goal would be, over time, to just reduce the number of transcripts students have. It's not uncommon now for students to have four, five, or even six transcripts, and that is just, provides more opportunity for credit loss, when students can't remember which institutions they took dual credit, through which they took dual credit. And so, under number three are things like that. There would just be a number of things that we don't know, because we don't have statewide insight into them. Some of these recommendations come from the audit report, and others from the year that board staff and I spent talking to people and holding listening sessions. Another piece that's on there that I'm really excited about is some direction to develop collaborative graduate certificates for dual credit instructors, to educate up, instead of looking for alternatives always, to provide more graduate opportunities for our teachers, particularly in rural areas. There's interest and support, and we could do a lot of work in these areas. So again, I just want to remind you, I know there's been some question around, the one that's emboldened there, around requiring NASEP accreditation. I'm certainly open, I have no, the goal here is to have some consistency around whether board policy is being enacted. We don't currently have staff or reporting mechanisms. I'm open to conversations and to continuing to think about how to best develop those supportive structures. NASEP is kind of the coin of the realm, but we can look at state-specific approaches as well, and that's perfectly appropriate. So again, none of these necessarily are policy changes, they just give us a staff, and again, as your institution, some direction for further work. So I would stand for your questions and welcome them.
Are there any questions or comments? I might just mention that there has been some concern raised about requiring, from two of our community colleges, about requiring another accreditation. That's somewhat time-consuming and can be costly. And so, our community, I believe our community colleges are already accredited through the Northwest Commission on Colleges and Universities and the Higher Learning Commission. There have been some concerns about quality, and I just wondered if Heidi, you could bring up, why are there specific concerns that have been raised about quality in any way that NASEP could correct, that the other accrediting bodies would not pick up on?
Thank you, Chair Roach. It's a good question. I don't see NASEP as a panacea that will solve anything. What it will help do is provide peer review and further input. It's always healthy to have input and professional development. It also provides some kind of baseline quality control, and I don't say quality meaning that the programs that don't have it aren't of high quality. I think all of our programs in Idaho are of high quality. It's just a question of how much kind of baseline, if we want to level the playing field. Our policy, our board policy refers to NASEP standards, but there is no kind of reporting or accountability mechanism, and we don't currently have staff support to do that. Again, I think there are other ways. We could get at a state-level solution that would be appropriate, continuing to work with our stakeholders, so I look forward to that continued work.
So by approving these recommendations, we wouldn't be, as a board, mandating that we use NASEP across all institutions? Am I understanding that correctly? There's still institutional autonomy at this stage to make those? I mean, I think we all care about quality, obviously. It's just a question of how do you structure it?
Right. President Leibig, correct. I mean, it is in there, and we put a lot of thought into how much to put in the recommendations, and there's a lot there, and there are more in the reports, or in the report, or more details at least. We want it to be transparent, also, with you all and with the board, about what we were hearing from the stakeholders, what the audit team told us. These are not, these are kind of baseline recommendations. Having heard the discussion today and some of the feedback, if the board doesn't have the appetite for NASEP accreditation being built into policy, then that is something that we'll take into consideration as we continue to move forward with policy. I think the board's interest in kind of quality and a shared baseline can mean that we can work in other ways with the institutions to develop other processes. So I did want to not be coy. I mean, I wanted to be transparent about what our recommendations were there. At the same time, the motion and these three recommendations don't bind you to anything particular or bind the institutions, that would occur through policy recommendations that we bring back to you.
I just hate to, I'm concerned about quality as well, but if there is a specific problem with quality, I think a complaint or concern could be brought forward to the state board office, and it could be addressed. But to just carte blanche require that our community colleges have another bureaucratic task seems somewhat onerous to me, when they're already being accredited, so for, by other bodies that are recognized. So if there are...
Does anybody on the board have a different point of view than what Callie just stated? Okay. So Heidi, yeah, Heidi?
Thank you. President Leibig, happy to defer to the will of the board. I would just note that NWCCU itself encourages specific programs to have specialized accreditation. They note that they are an accreditor of institutions and not of specific programs. Dual credit is a high-impact program. And again, this issue has become, in some ways, a distraction. There's a lot more in the recommendations that will also be of high impact, and so that's why I think we can work together on other solutions, if this is going to be something that causes other challenges. I will say that six of our eight institutions are already NASEP accredited, so it's not, it's more common than not in our state.
Are there any other areas that you would highlight, where you, in the recommendations that have, controversy is the wrong term, but where there's tension?
Thank you, President Leibig, Chair Roach. I think the other issues that we will have to work on slowly and carefully over time, because the program has grown so rapidly and is so popular, is that question of, over time, working toward fewer partnerships in a region. I don't know exactly what that's going to look like, and so that's why we'll want to work carefully. But there are many, there are many high schools where there are four, five, and six institutions there, and that doesn't seem like an issue at the onset, and then, when the student goes to graduate, it becomes a challenge, when they realize they have all those transcripts to track. And it's not uncommon that when you apply to graduate school, four years later, or five years later, or 10 years later, after you've worked for a while, that you have to go back and find those original transcripts, as well as the school from which you graduated. So it's those kinds of things that are very student-centered, that the board can support, that will cause some challenges, that's an area of tension, but we'll work on it over time and with our partners.
Jen, did you have any comments around this item?
No, I would thank the committee, President Leibig and Chair Roach, I would thank the committee for their work on this, and Heidi and her team for their work on this. I'm certainly very sensitive to additional requirements on our institutions, who are working so hard to comply with so many different requirements that we add. I want to make sure that we have and continue to have an open conversation with them about their needs, but with a very student-centered and student-service focus, which is, of course, one of the priorities of the board, and I think we can do that. And I think the next time you'll hear from us on this, assuming this goes forward, is when we have practical recommendations for the board to take action on, being thoughtful of your time and investments.
President Leibig?
Yeah, David?
Yeah, I think Heidi, I'll enjoy some more education from you on the dual credit program, so I can understand it a little bit better, but I think this can be fixed by just modifying this to saying, from requiring NASEP accreditation, it could be examining it, or, you know, you could take NASEP out altogether if you wanted to, and just include a provision that we examine what the accreditation requirements need to be. And I think everybody should be comfortable.
Heidi?
President Leibig, Board Member Turnbull, the motion language itself doesn't mention NASEP accreditation, so yes, thank you, and I'll take this conversation into account.
Okay. Callie?
Go to motion.
Please.
I move to approve the dual credit program strategic vision statement and the three recommendations that direct board staff to establish metrics of success, develop a credit with a purpose framework, and enhance dual credit collaboration and systemness while reducing unnecessary duplication.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Heidi, thank you, Patty. Thank you, Callie. Well, now we're only 10 minutes from lunch, so I would like to take a moment of personal privilege, is that what they call it? In my five years on the board, what I've found is some of the, that's some of the best discussions as a board that we have, and some of the most productive and valuable discussions are when we carve out time in our board meeting to really address some of the big strategic questions that are facing our state and our students and our institutions. So I guess, you know, we're coming to the end of this current academic year, we've just gotten through graduations, we're starting to plan for our next academic year, and so what I thought, I would just take a few minutes, is to get your feedback, the board's feedback on, as we think about planning out our agendas over the next year, what are the major strategic items that you've been thinking about that you would like us to spend time on as a board? And if we can get a list of those, and we can then prioritize them, and then, over the course of the next year, I can't promise we'll deal with them all in August, but we can layer them in over the course of the next year and have, hopefully, productive discussions that can help drive the state forward. So I'll open up the mics. Sean?
Thank you, Chairman Leibig, and thank you for asking that question, I appreciate it. I've already talked probably too long about medical education as a whole, but I feel that's a priority, but also, actually, and this is probably a longer discussion than shaping the year ahead, but I think it's important, and that's shaping education for the future. What we are seeing across the nation, colleges and universities consolidating or closing, students not necessarily going to college to pursue their goals in the future. And so, spending some time on trying to project what is truly needed for our students to be successful for their future, whether that's college, or workforce, or in CTE, for example, and the right degrees, the right amount of time to get to the degrees, and at a, I know you can't define it very well, but affordable cost. And so, big-picture conversation about what should our system look like, because I think, as we've expressed, each of you have expressed in one way or another in the last couple of years, the system is going to change. And what do we think, where are we driving towards? So, big picture. Thanks.
Yes, Cindy?
One thing that comes up when I talk to the local teachers, which I love to talk to, and some students... to, and some students as well, is the chronic absenteeism. That it's, for some, it seems optional that they attend school. And I think that's really detrimental to the education because all students benefit when kids are in the classroom. And so I see that's on the rise in our local area for sure. And I don't know if it is across the state, but it's an issue the teachers have brought up to me.
Thank you. Superintendent, you want to add on to that at all?
Yes, thanks for reading my mind a little bit. I, I think my comments would, would take in what Cindy has said and then broadly where Sean is. I, I think it's a duty of, of our, our board to polish off our crystal balls a little bit. And as we, we look down the road, we know right now that students, whether they're post-secondary or in, in K-12, and their families expect different deliveries of the, the same product. The, the customers that we're serving have different expectations and, and that's growing. And, and we, we see that nationally, perhaps to a greater extent, but we're definitely seeing that around the state and to Cindy's comment about coming to school. Well, we, we need to, we, we still value and prize education. How does that look in, in the coming years? And anticipating or at least setting our, ourselves up in a way that we can be more nimble? I know we talked about this yesterday. Our abilities to adapt and adjust to the modern classroom have typically or historically not been fast for reasons that we, better than anybody, understand. We can't operate like that anymore. And, and I think what you're asking is that, that question, what are the big picture educational items that are not only in front of us, but what do we see coming? How are we set up to adjust those? And, and again, I think the delivery of the same things for our customers will look differently. And, and that's okay, but let's make sure that we're, we're preparing ourselves and laying the groundwork to be able to do that.
Yeah, it's interesting, you know, and I guess it's not surprising. I know, I think about the employees that I'm trying to hire in different businesses, how many of them say, well, I kind of want the job, but only if I can work from home two days a week. I mean, if, if there's that mentality at home, then the notion of, but my kids go to school every day, you know what I mean? There's this incongruence in our society that I think's magnifying that. Not that I agree with. I do some of that. Other, other comments or thoughts?
So three things come to mind. One of them's been covered already. I think we need to take a look at the evolutionary forces that are shaping education. And, and a term that comes to mind is creative destruction. And that's often the term we use in business. Sometimes you have to be willing to dismantle something to be able to create the thing that takes its place. And so those are hard things to do in institutional settings, but I think we need to explore those kind of issues. I think in our board meetings, if we could spend, and it may be that we have to, I, I think about tactical versus strategic discussions. And a lot of our board meeting time is taken up with these kind of administrative tasks. And we need to spend more time on strategic discussions. I don't know if we can do that separately, but we have to get to that point. And then one thing that I've noticed in my short term is we don't spend a whole lot of time on K through 12. That's Debbie's province, but we have, we spend 90% of our time on higher education. So I don't know if there's a better balance that we can create there.
Thank you.
My stepping on toes, Debbie.
Okay. Dr. Carr?
Well, Mr. Leibig, I probably won't surprise anybody with what I'm going to say, but it would be my hope that this board would, would continue to look at all the possible ways to take advantage of our unique system. We're the only state in the country that has a single board overseeing kindergarten through graduate school. That ought to give us pause and it ought to also make us the strongest system in the country. And so whether that's looking at the system as a whole, which is very challenging to do, or whether that's looking at systemness and working on policies we have now and encouraging more collaboration, I think those are all part of that. But that would be my hope that, that what we've been working on would continue, ensuring that our kids can move step by step and rung by rung with the least amount of challenge and difficulty and ensuring success for all and making sure that, that the access to education and the quality of education that students receive in this state are not a factor of their address. Keeping our focus very clear on making sure that our rural, small rural districts and students who go to school there have the same advantages as they do in our large districts.
Thank you. Anything to add, Mr. Gilbert? Superintendent? Okay, well, thank you. The, the one I had and all this, nationally, there's been an erosion of public trust in higher ed. It's not helped by the narratives in many parts of, of government. Some of it's not deserved, but some of it, I think, is. And I think higher head hasn't always done a great job of looking at itself in the mirror. And I, I think I'm less concerned about our institutions here in Idaho than I am by some of the institutions that I went to. But having said that, I, I think there is an opportunity for us to continue to work in that area. And the three, the three areas that I'm sort of thinking about that, and we can talk about more when we have this agenda item, is just being clear on what, what the outcomes are. You know, what is, how can we talk about, and it's not necessarily in financial, I'm not saying this in a financial way, but what is the return on the time and money you spend when you get a higher ed degree? I think we, I think the returns are there, but I think we need to be more articulate in how we talk about that. And I think we, we need to strengthen as a country overall, our citizenship's knowledge about civics and the history of our, our nation. I think a lot of the public criticism comes from data that says only 32% of Americans know their three branches of government. I just think, or, or that they don't, no one's read the Constitution. I mean, I think some of these things, if you graduate from college in the United States, there should be an expectation that you sort of understand that stuff. So I'd like to, as a board, have a discussion of, those are just two examples, but a broader discussion that may include those. And I'm sure you all have your own ideas on how we can kind of re, reframe the playing field for all of higher education. So I'll leave it there. Any other comments? Okay, so then I have two more items of personal privilege. First is Mike Gekler. Can you stand up, please? So Mike is retiring, as I understand it, this Friday. Is that right? After nearly 20 years working for the state Idaho, 21, I don't know, I may not have all the data right, including two years with the Department of Water Resources, 11 years with Fish and Game, and then the last seven and a half with the State Board of Education. So Mike, we wish you all the best and thank you for everything you've done. And then, do we have our, Linda, we have a gift for you. I'm not sure this is your last meeting because I think you have to, you have to get replaced before you're replaced, but your term ends at the end of June. And so I'd like to present you with this gift and thanks. But you, but you have to open it up. And then as you open it, I'll tell, I'll give the story of it. So 50 years, 1971 is when you started teaching. Teacher, principal, superintendent, president of the state board. I said this at the last meeting, but if there was a Mount Rushmore, she'd be honored. So Linda, do you want to, you want to comment on what the picture is?
Well, I'm overwhelmed, to say the least. Thank you very much. If you don't know what this is, it's a very special place in my life. This was Central School, which existed in the parking lot, the parking garage behind the state board office. And it is where I started my teaching career. The last year, it was open as a regular public school and my first year of teaching were the same. I continue to say those two factors were not, had nothing to do with each other. It had one class of each grade and three special ed classrooms and an amazing principal who took me aside halfway through the year and said, you're going to be a principal and the other female principals and I are going to mentor you. And it was a great place to start. Sorry to see it go, but we had no grass, we had no playground, it was all cement, old building, cold, hot. But it has a very special place in my heart and I thank you very much for this. It has been a great honor to serve on the board. And I thank you all for your kindness, for helping me to learn. And I know that you're going to continue to do great things in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And there is, Linda, there will be a plaque that gets attached to that. We just kind of ran out of time. But Lisa, thank you for, it took a lot of work to find that photo and even more to figure out how to get it framed in time for the meeting. So thank you for that. Any final comments?
Yeah, I'm going to take a moment of personal privilege. People know that I don't, I'm not a super emotional person, I'm going to get emotional. I first met Linda Clark, I, I, you know, I'm one of these people that's dumb enough to volunteer for things out of the gate when people tell me to. And I came to an educational meeting after spending, basically coming straight out of higher ed. You may not remember that, but I came into a room around sort of bringing business more into K-12 education and some other things with, with some civic leaders in Boise. And there was this woman in the room that, five minutes into the conversation, I'm watching the way she, everybody in the room is turning to and looking at her on, hey, here's how we should think about it. Everybody looks at Linda. Here's how we should, you know, potentially redo the way, everything was Linda. And so my first thought was, well, I'm just going to go sit next to her. And literally got up, I was sitting next to, many of you know, to Skip Oppenheimer. And I said, see you, Skip. And, and went and sat next to Linda. And I've been doing that now for north of 20 years, 20, 25, 30 years. And I've never met someone that is such a, that cares so deeply, has such an incredible thought, incredible foresight, and one of the, I think the most underrated part of Linda is one of the best senses of humor I've ever been around. And I don't know what I'm going to do, not having, being able to sit next to you, learn from you, the wisdom that you've given and that you've imparted to me. And you've always done it from a place of friendship and from a place of respect. You know, you don't always, you don't always have to agree, but I learn every single time, Linda, I'm around you. And I just want to thank you for, for doing that, you know, for the state of Idaho. But I want to thank you for doing it for me, for, for such a long period of time. And, you know, I'm, I'm just, I just don't know what the hell I'm going to do. I'm going to miss the heck out of you. It's just been incredible. Thank you, Linda.
May I also say something?
Yep.
From afar?
For sure, Superintendent.
I want to add my personal thanks to Linda. Like Bill, I share so many of those sentiments. I was appointed to the board just a hair before Linda, but the, the learning that I have gained from her is immeasurable. I have valued and appreciated her mentorship, her friendship, her intellect and, and passion for what she does is so evident. And as Bill said, is just a hallmark of, of who she is. And I, I know, and I feel like I can speak on behalf of all of us and others who've served previously, that she's left an indelible imprint on education in the state of Idaho. What a wonderful tribute and, and what a wonderful part of who she's given through volunteer service and, and sacrifice and, and so many ups and downs of, of what we do. And she's just been that constant thread. And Linda, I thank you.
I just want to say that-
Go ahead, Callie.
That Linda has been a mentor and advisor to me and so supportive. I'm just going to miss you so much. It's a real, you're a great leader and you've been really instrumental. Thank you.
David?
I think everybody in this room knows Linda well through her years of service. My own personal interaction goes back a few decades. We built a few schools together. I think, you said, you know, if there's a Mount Rushmore for education in Idaho, Linda is one of the people that would be on it, definitely, you know? And there's, but my family goes back even further. So my wife's family, there's 11 kids, I think she was principal to seven or eight of them, right, at Joplin Elementary. And then I watched her and got to work with her as she built essentially the largest school district in the state, right? I think you told me the other day, it was like 10,000 or 11,000 students when you took over. And now it's the largest school district in the state. Her vision on acquiring the old Javel facility and transforming that into the headquarters, reminiscing about the old headquarters that Meridian School District, it was called at the time, used to occupy. Oh my goodness. And so anyway, it's just been a pleasure to be associated with you every step of the way. And we hope we don't miss you. Hope you, I hope you are with us for a long, long time and continue to advise us. And don't be afraid to call us out.
Thank you all.
Linda, I'll give you the final, final word.
I don't think I can say anything else.
Perfect, all right.
Oh, I, I did want to say, not only, not only did she build the largest school district, her parting comments were for the rural students in our state, you know? And that speaks to her heart.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, everyone. Meeting, I believe we have lunch scheduled right now. I think we need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Thank you. Sean, do we have a second? Thank you, Callie. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, we'll see you in August. Thank you.